Are you ready over there? Mr. Kelly, are you ready?
I'm ready, I'm sure.
Second clerk? Everybody ready? Hang on one second, my computer went down all of a sudden. All righty. We're gonna call to order the Board of Commissioners regular meeting here in Effingham County this May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two. And it is five oh three P. M. Have a roll call. Mr. Floyd?
Here.
Mr. Burdette?
Here.
Mr. Corbett's here, Mr. Deloach?
Here.
Mr. Loper?
Here.
And Mr. Kiefer?
Here.
So all our attendants, let's give everyone a please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Gracious Father, we are so thankful for our community, we thankful for the friends and neighbors that we serve, just the life that we enjoy here, we are so thankful for. We ask your protection upon this community, we ask that you give us wisdom as we discern the business so that we may make those decisions that will be beneficial to our folks and friends of this community. So guide us through this time tonight, be over our country, we pray, with those who are hurting with the shootings and all the things that are going on in lawless areas. We pray for your loving hand upon these folks who with loss in these communities to regain that control. All these things we ask in the name of our son, your son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have our agenda before us tonight, are there any corrections or additions to the agenda as presented?
No additions, Mr. Chairman, but if you will note on your agenda, under new business number nine, it's a consideration to approve change order number three. It's noted as copper construction, but that is for green line architects.
Should be copper construction?
To be green lining.
Should be green line?
Yeah, you have a corrected agenda.
Okay, all righty. Thank you very much, any other corrections, additions, do you have a motion to accept the agenda as presented with the one correction?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Burdette. Have a second?
Second.
Second of Mr. Loper, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Hearing none, it's approved, we have our agenda. Next item is our minutes, are there any corrections or additions to the minutes as presented for May third, two thousand twenty-two? Hearing none, do you have a motion to approve as presented?
Motion to move, motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kiefer, second by Mr. Deloach to approve the minutes as presented, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Hearing none, they pass unanimously. I want to welcome those who are in attendance tonight. Any comments that you'd like to make, please make them to the agenda items at the appropriate time, and if you keep them to two or three minutes, that'll be very helpful so that everyone will have a chance to speak when the time comes. If you come to the microphone before you speak, that'd be helpful, state your name clearly so that we have a good record of that as well. All the correspondence for this meeting, all the documents are on our website in the clerk's office, hopefully you've had a chance to review those and are ready to discuss at the appropriate time. With that, we'll move into our consent agenda, we have seven items on our consent agenda, they're long, so let me just read those out, then I'll have a motion or entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as I am reading it. Item number one, consideration to approve, ratify and affirm submittal of a grant application to swap charitable Brent Yates Fund and accept the grant award in the amount of four thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Item number two, consideration to approve, ratify and affirm submittal of a grant application to Georgia Trauma Commission, this is GTC, EMS trauma related equipment grant and accept the grant award in the amount of eleven thousand nine seventy-eight and eighty cents. Item number three, consideration to approve renewal of a pre-event contract with C E R E S Environmental for disaster debris removal. Item number four, consideration to approve a clinical service agreement between Effingham County Prison and Effingham County Hospital. Item number five, consideration to approve renewal of contracts for Otis elevators for services at the administrative complex located eight oh two and eight oh four South Laurel Street. Item number six, consideration to approve to renew the rental agreement with Action Pack Formerly Concerted Services Incorporated for space in the Effingham County Annex. And item number seven, consideration to approve to reappoint Sean Desay Duncan and David Atkins to the Coastal Workforce Development Board, C W D B. That is our consent agenda, do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion to approve is read.
I heard a motion by Mr. Deloach, so I'll take Mr. Loper's as a second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Whole business. Only one item, second public hearing for the abandonment of Lacy Trial Road and approval of the certificate of abandonment.
Good evening. Commissioners Eric Larson, Assistant County Manager, I'm standing over here in the corner this morning, this evening, not at the podium. This is the second of two public hearings concerning the abandonment of Lacy Trial Road for county maintenance. You saw, we had the first public meeting and notice to the public about thirty days ago in April, on April nineteenth. The residents that live on Lacy Trial Road have requested the county consider permanent closure as a county road. We do not have right of way on this, so this is just simply abandonment of our maintenance responsibilities and rights to do so. Petition was made of a hundred percent of the abutting and attached property owners, affected property owners. We did have a statement from fire, sheriff and EMS that they have reviewed and are in agreement with our proposal to abandon the road. Tonight again is the second public hearing, and once abandoned, the property owners will have responsibility for maintenance from this point forward.
Okay, thank you, sir, we'll open a public hearing and see if, I'm gonna just ask first of all, is there anyone speaking in opposition to closing this road? If you come forward. Seeing no one coming forward, I'm gonna see if there's, you don't have to, if you want to speak for the closing of this road, you may do so at this time. All right, I'm gonna close the public hearing then, see if there's any questions from the Board of Commissioners?
Nobody has any questions, I'll, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
All right, I'll make a motion that we accept the abandonment request and approve the certificate of abandonment.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Deloach, second by Mr. Loper, and let that is alternative one, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Hearing none, it passes unanimously, it's the second reading, it will be closed, okay? You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting if you don't have much to do. All right, thank you guys. One less road we have to take care of. Item number, well, I got a new business, item number one under new business, consideration to approve resolution twenty-two dash oh twenty-five recognizing Abicorne Baptist Church's two-hundredth anniversary, that's a long time.
Long time. I don't see any of the representatives here, so I don't know, yeah.
All right, we'll wait, and if they come in?
I cannot hear her speaking.
Let me know, and we'll come back.
I can't hear her speaking.
There's no one here from that church to be here?
He said he couldn't hear me.
I can't hear our work when she talks.
Yeah, I was gonna tell you what she said, there was no one here representing the church, so I'm gonna delay that item till they get here.
Okay.
And we'll go to item number two. Item number two under new business, consideration to approve a final plat for Savannah Gateway Industrial Hub Area Two located off of McCall Road consisting of seven lots, map number four fifty F, parcel number twenty-one in the second district.
So this is a final plat for, it says weight subdivision, because it's more than three, so oftentimes staff are able to handle signees, but in this case with seven parcels, these are the parcels on the west side of McCall Road and it includes the essential gateway to the central Georgia Railroad. There is a representative here.
Will there be a berm where the school is?
It might not be.
Okay.
This is on the east side of McCall Road, right?
West.
That was confusing when I'm looking at this plat, because I'm looking at this thing here and it shows.
You see the school, the school's on the east side of it?
Yeah, you view it this way, so this is Gateway Parkway and east side of McCall, this is, this is the undeveloped portion, yes, around the school.
Put it up on the screen, I want to understand.
I don't have it on, you all have it, you should have it in your packet.
I do, and I don't see, what are you talking about, the school, show me the school.
Hold on.
Oh yeah, I see that, are they talking about this area or this area here?
Everyone is numbered, correct, the number ones.
Yes.
Get in the next plat, get in the next plat, that's what's confusing to me, you have the Central Georgia Railroad, it's showing the east side to McCall, I don't see anything showing the west side.
Of the plat itself, yeah.
Yeah, this is the north arrow, so.
Let me understand what I'm looking at here, I don't want to prove the wrong thing.
Probably just because it's showing.
Here's the George Central Railroad, that's rinking down here.
It's turned the other way.
Yeah, mhm, yeah, but see the north arrow is over here, so it's just rotated, north arrow, this is McCall, that's east of McCall, and that's where that large warehouse already is located, this is the school site.
New business number one.
Number two.
The school site's right here? Okay, all right, all right, you just want to turn the same way as the other, and I couldn't, I couldn't make it make sense earlier. Okay.
So this is really just a partial subdivision as they prepare to submit site development plans and develop the property?
Final plat, is this the plat?
It's, it's, it's because, it's, this is, we see this a lot with the industrial parks where they're splitting out parcels in preparation for, you know, just transferring ownership and submitting development plans, and this is, just happens to be a large enough cluster of parcels that had had to come before the board.
But is there a berm?
Is there a berm?
To protect the school.
No, the plan right now is just to abide by the three hundred foot.
Just a what, can you count on the mic, please?
We have not planned a berm, we've planned to just abide by the three hundred foot buffer.
I'd literally like to see a berm to protect that school.
Okay, we can discuss that.
I'd like to do that before I voted on this, I mean, others may feel differently, but I'm not gonna vote on it till I see a berm.
Okay.
We need to protect these kids.
Can you state your name, please?
Scott Rogers.
Do you want to table it till they put that on there or something?
Yeah, can we table this?
There's, there's, is there any issue legally to requiring something like that?
In the case of a school?
Well, is it in the ordinance, I mean, what are the requirements?
I don't think we even list school in the ordinance, do we, other than residential?
That's the question, it's up against a school versus a normal residential, which is just three hundred foot.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I don't know that, I would have to look at that to see if there's something in the code that would allow you to do that, or if we've done it in the past.
Is it a school, you know?
Never had anybody encompass a school industrial.
Be my question, Roger, that was asking, since it is a school, it's not normally a residential, a commercial, which we have one fifty-four commercial, three hundred for residential, but this is a school, if it doesn't address it, can we not legally add that if we felt that was protecting the?
I'd have to look at it. I would recommend you table it.
For residential, we, I don't know, we think we can adjust it, we can add something unless they want to shorten the buffer, and for commercial, we couldn't add something to it unless they wanted to shorten it, we might could swap something off, but this is a school, and I don't know that it addresses that, to your point.
I don't think we have anything listed for a school, but I think at a good faith, that would be something you guys would want to do to protect that school, whether or not.
Yeah, I mean, it's something that we could discuss, I mean, I'm just not sure with, under the current zoning and ordinance, if it's, you know, required, it would hold up.
Sometimes we gotta protect kids beyond an ordinance or a zone.
Yeah, but I don't know if it's, if it's, since it didn't address school, I mean, that's what I'm trying to look at, does it just address residential and commercial but not other types of property? Then it's gonna be left open, I would think, to interpretation, and we could negotiate what that looks like for the safety of the school and protection.
Absolutely.
I think that's the point that he's making. Would it be a bother to you if we tabled this to the next meeting, if we have a chance to look at that and see if we could talk about a berm that would set by?
Two weeks.
Two weeks, well, it's actually three weeks.
Three weeks.
Because of the five week period in this month, the June sixth meeting, I believe it is, seventh or seventh, June seventh.
Okay.
That work for you?
I mean, I'd prefer if we could pass it today, but if you want to table it, we can.
I'd like to table it, in this condition.
Unless you can tell us you can put a berm up?
Yeah, I can't, yeah, I can't commit.
This is so, so different than just buffering down to a residential area, and then we've got tiny kids there. I would think we need to protect them a little more than just having open area or trees, or they're gonna hear it, they're gonna smell it, they're gonna see it, it's bigger than the trees, this is a good place for a berm.
You okay with table, and that'll give the board a chance to hear more of what Mr. Burdette's thinking, and then we can come back and have discussion.
And it's just dirt.
Input material.
Dirt and vegetation, and it's not like it's a huge cost or anything, but at a good faith, I'd really like to see that.
Why don't you make a motion to table and see if you can get a second, if we do, we go forward, if not, we address it tonight.
I make a motion to table until the June seventh meeting.
Second.
Okay, motion to table to the sixth, seventh meeting of twenty-two, do I have a second?
Yes.
I, Burdette, Floyd, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Hearing none, you name it, so it'll be tabled to the June seventh meeting, okay?
Thank you.
Be thinking about, and maybe y'all could connect and talk about what the berm would look like and help the rest of the board.
More than happy to meet with you and do something.
Okay.
A lot of times, big industrious areas like this have bad dirt anyway, you know, it's not too, I don't think it's too much ass to protect these kids in this case, if you don't mind.
If you had the ability to address the berm tonight, we might have discussions, see if the board even wanted a berm as a whole, but you sound like you don't have the authority without talking to them first.
Yeah, and can you push it to the end of the meeting?
If you could commit, I wouldn't have a problem with that.
Yeah, we can push it to the end of the meeting.
I just want to.
It may end up just tabling it.
We want to table, can we take it off the table at the end of the meeting if we want to?
If you want to, yeah.
Okay, it's table for now, but if you can get some answers for us, I'll take it off the table and we'll.
I'd like to see a thirty foot berm on this one.
Okay.
Talk to me about it and come back.
Sometimes places like this are just hauling dirt away, just to get rid of it, so this, yeah, it does serve a purpose just beyond protection of the kids, but the big thing is protecting these kids, they're pretty much encompassed by industrial. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Item number three under new business, consideration to approve a final plat for Early Street Subdivision consisting of five lots, map number three eighty-eight, parcel number four in the fourth district.
This is the final plat for Early Street Subdivision, it was rezoned last year, sketch plan has been approved, and they are now ready to sell the lots, the plat itself is actually at Department of Public Health for signing as we speak. Two lots, frontage on Early Street, the remaining three have access via unpaved easement from Early Street, staff have approved, reviewed this and recommend alternative one.
Any questions or discussion from the board?
Make a motion to approve all number one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Loper, second by Mr. Deloach to approve alternative one, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Item number four, consideration to approve a quote from Enterprise Fleet Management for vehicle purchase.
Good evening, Allison Bruton, purchasing agent, the vehicles in front of you, one is for EMS and one is for EMA, and both were in this year's budget.
Any questions or discussion or motion?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Burdette, second by Mr. Deloach to approve alternative one, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Item number five, consideration to approve renewal of a pre-event contract with Thompson Consulting for debris, excuse me, disaster debris monitoring and financial recovery services.
Yes, sir, so Thompson Consulting Services has requested another renewal, but in addition to that renewal, they have requested increased fees in accordance with the Consumer Price Index, staff's recommending alternative one.
Any questions or discussion?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Burdette, second by Mr. Kiefer to approve alternative one, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Excuse me, item number six, consideration to approve to award contract twenty-two dash thirty dash zero zero one to Signature Tennis Court Incorporated for tennis court repair at Baker Pond.
Yes, sir, so in April, staff posted a request for quotes to repair and resurface the tennis courts at Baker's Pond, four submittals were received, and you have the breakdown in your packet. Parks and Landscaping staff has reviewed these submittals and recommend approval to Signature Tennis Courts, which is alternative one.
Any questions or discussion? Motion for alternative one.
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Burdette, second by Mr. Floyd to approve alternative one, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Hearing none, it passes unanimously.
Big delta between those quotes, that's huge.
Yeah.
I think a lot of them had their, their own products and things, too, there was a lot of questions about which products to use, so.
Item number seven, consideration to approve change order number four with APAC Atlantic Incorporated for the Blue Jay McCall Road Intersection Improvements.
Yes, sir, so this change order is for additional edgeline rumble strips for the road section paved that was covered in change order number three, so it's the old section of Blue Jay between the curve and the railroad tracks, and this additional work is one thousand nine hundred and ninety-two dollars, staff recommends alternative one.
Questions, discussion or motion?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Burdette, second by Mr. Loper to approve alternative one, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Hearing none, it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number eight, consideration to approve a memorandum of understanding with Georgia High Low Trail Incorporated to construct a mountain bike trail park in Panora Park.
Commissioners, this is Eric Larson, I'll be introducing Ms. Mary Charles Howard, I'll let her give you the quote unquote sales pitch on this. I will make a correction and accept some response, accept the responsibility for maybe in an unintentionally misleading the magnitude of such this, this project. As an engineer, I use big words like construct and design and maintenance and made it sound like it was a bigger project than it really is, but she's gonna explain to you, but this is simply a partnership to maintain some of our existing trails in one of our parks for the use of biking, you know, pedaled bikes, in addition to its other current uses. And her program is offering maintenance of the trail in a partnership to use the park to hold camps, so without further ado, I'll introduce Ms. Char, Ms. Howard here.
Yeah, thank you, thanks. Great, so I'm Mary Charles, and I am a landscape architect and the director of the Georgia High Low Trail, been here before, because we this year got a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant to expand a program that we have, the Kids Bike League, from one county, Myhome County, which is Washington County, all the way to all eight counties that the Georgia High Low Trail is proposed to go in. And this Kids Bike League teaches kids ages second grade through eighth grade how to ride mountain bikes, so what we would like to do here in Effingham County, we've checked out two sites, and Panora Ballpark seems to be the best fit for what we want to do, teaching the second to eighth graders how to ride mountain bikes. Because there's existing trails at Panora Ballpark, and so there really wouldn't be much work we'd need to do before camps would start on June twentieth this year, so in a month, and we would have sixty kids out there in one week, thirty kids in the morning, and then thirty kids again in the evening. We would bring the coaches in, we're bringing them from all over the state, we have our camp manager here in the back, Bo Wells, so he's local, and that's what we want to do, is really serve this community with local people and teach people here to be coaches and teach these kids to be expert mountain bikers when they're our age.
Have you already started advertised, or do you already know you're gonna have this support of the kids or interest from kids?
So we have been in a huge rush, because we just found out we got this grant in November, and now really getting the land, pieces of land and going to all these county meetings and city meetings has been the bulk of my work. So we just opened registration about three weeks ago, and now we're, you know, gangbusters on recruiting children, so if y'all know any second to eighth graders, sign them up. Specifically, we'd like to target, and anyone's welcome, but we'd really like to target girls and minorities who have traditionally not been welcome in the mountain biking realm and outdoors, but anyone is welcome, and it's gonna be a great program. We have the BRAG, which is the Bike Ride Across Georgia Dream Team, which is their youth bike team that does that ride, we have their coaches who have been coaching kids on bikes for twenty years, those are gonna be the coaches at this camp, so it's gonna be five star.
Who, does this county own the land you're doing all this on?
Well, we would like to use the Panora Ballpark, which is a county rec field area, there's forest in the back, and there's already heavy equestrian use, and there's. and there's already heavy equestrian use and there's evidence of mountain bike use already there and hiking. And so it's already being used. We just are officially, formally coming to you guys.
Yeah, yeah, sure it does.
Okay, that's fine.
Yes, sir. And, um, yes.
Construction money are we spending to, to get it up to stuff?
None.
So none of that grant money goes toward this at all?
Oh, you guys aren't spending any money.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, are you using any of their grant money for this park?
This is, well, so the way things go, you know, you think what things are gonna cost, right? So we got $450,000 that was supposed to pay me as a landscape architect to lay out these trails. Well, it turns out it was so much work, I had to hire somebody to replace me just to get camp in order and get the right people hired and the experts on board. So I have given away my $50,000 salary to someone else and now I'm working for free to lay out your trails. So this project is bigger than $450,000. This is purchasing all the bikes, the trailers, employees, and it's for two years. That 450 lasts us for two years. It sounded big to me in the beginning and now that we're doing it, it's like, oh, we should ask for more.
Sega Sorba.
Yes, sir.
Is that, uh, is it a nonprofit?
So what we had to do in all the questions from, you know, legality and attorneys and what if a volunteer gets hurt when they're helping on a trail day? We had to start, because of Kids Bike League, we had to start our own Sorba chapter. So Sorba is the Southern Off-Road Mountain Biking Association. They have national insurance. So they can cover really big, you know, liability case, you know, sort of incidents. So we started our own chapter, so we'll be covered under their insurance for any, um, mountain bike trail building and for volunteer workdays. So all the volunteers sign a Sorba waiver and then they would be covered. So that's trail construction, which we're not doing at this time, um, but we hope to come to you. Yeah, yeah, Sorba's a nonprofit and the Georgia High Low Trail's a nonprofit. So there's two separate nonprofits.
Any cost of the kids?
Okay, $75 for one week of camp, um, and those who are at need or in foster care, it's $5 for the week.
And, and y'all provide the bikes?
We provide the vi, bikes. We ask the kids not to bring their own bike because we want all the kids to have the same playing, like, level playing field. And we don't wanna spend like an hour fixing someone's bike. So we provide all the bikes and the helmets. The kids get to go home with the helmets. We had a nonprofit from Effingham County, um, donate all 480 helmets for all the kids all over the state for this program. So Effingham County has stepped up already for this and they want it. I just need the land.
Just wanna make sure we're, we're okay legally.
The only, the only concern I might have, Lee, don't you address this, is that if we approve it for this event, then it's got insurance that covers it. I'm a little concerned that we have a mountain bike trail that now our insurance has gotta cover and someone gets injured, so.
Kids are riding bikes already probably out there.
Yeah, but not, not with the sanction of the county as a mountain bike trail. You know what I'm saying? It's.
So.
What I'm worried about is doing some kind of commercial application on county property, us ensuring, agreeing we're gonna keep it up to these standards. I don't know if, have we looked at these standards for mounting, mountain biking?
That, that's been, I guess, my concern from the beginning is, one, are we getting into this business to where the county's wanting to, to be part of it? Um, just like it would be the rec ballfields. Um, and if that is the case with this, my concern was, we haven't seen, I guess, really the, the memorandum of understanding is pretty thin, so I'm not sure what the design is gonna look like, what the maintenance is gonna look like. Um, is it gonna be a situation where we get kids hurt? I understand you've got insurance that may could cover the particular events, but what about the other 10 months, 11 months out of the year? And how often are they gonna maintain it and is the county gonna be involved in that? I'm a little hesitant on any sort of, um, partnership with a nonprofit because where do we draw the line? With this one, what do we do with the next one? Why are we choosing this one? Um, and I know there's money and that sounds great, but at the end of the day, it's like, how do we pick and choose? Those are just concerns I've had from the beginning with it. I think it's great, you know, it's something for the kids and I, I don't wanna, um, take away from that part of it. But there's just legal aspects here that, that give me grave concern on, you know, the design and kids getting hurt and, you know, the county's the owner of the property and, and how is it really gonna be maintained? I would think it would have to be something maintained on a weekly basis almost for potholes and whatever else could be out there. And, and what's the design look like? Are there certain areas where they're gonna be going up a hill, down a hill? Um, there's just all sorts of things that kinda cross through my mind from a, from a liability standpoint that, um, that we can't get from the MOU.
I can answer some of these questions.
Okay, sure.
So first is the liability, the Georgia Outdoor Recreation Act, which was made over 30 years ago. It's very outdated. I just talked to a legislator yesterday at the Georgia Trails Conference about updating this. Um, the Georgia Outdoor Recreation Act is made specifically for hunters, that's why it was started. But it does also cover bicycling. If you're not charging for people on your land, um, so you guys are not charging our nonprofit to use your land. So then you would be covered under the Georgia Outdoor Recreation Act, that a person recreating on that land could not sue the landowner. My husband's an attorney for the city of Sandersville and he has, I, he, he really won't let me walk out the door without consulting him. So I've talked to him about this and he's gone over it and he's gone over these specific lawsuits that have happened nationwide. And he really does believe, and I've talked with other, other statewide attorneys who are familiar with mountain biking and they say, whatever our Sorba insurance and our Georgia High Low Trail camp insurance doesn't cover, the Georgia Outdoor Recreation Act will cover. As far as maintenance goes, um, you guys, you guys have existing trails that users are maintaining on their own already. We will also come in on a monthly basis through Sorba. Our Sorba chapter will have monthly workdays where we'll come out because we don't wanna just serve these kids one time a month and then just give them this high hope in their life and then disappear until next year. So we come back once a month with our trailer with bicycles. The kids can check out a bike like a bike library. They can go ride the trails because the kids don't go home with the bikes, um, but they could come back once a month and ride. We also, on those mornings, while it's cool, will have the volunteers out taking care of the trails. Y'all's trails are super easy as compared to like really hilly trails up in, you know, Green County is our most northern county that we're doing this program. Um, so it's pretty low maintenance. If there's an issue like a tree across the trail, um, and somebody needs to get to it. Again, that's why it's really convenient to have Bo, um, as the camp manager. Because not only do we have Bo, we have Bike Effingham here with Ashley Parker. He can come out and help Bo. Um, and we also have Alden Strasburg. She's here. She's, uh, one of our Sorba members as well. And so, uh, like I said, Effingham County has shown up the strongest out of all our counties. Um, so we've, we've done our best to cover this as much as possible. We've got two other rec departments on board for this. Um, well, we're still talking to Green County. We sort of had to switch, uh, one of our sites in Green County. The place was a wedding event venue and they decided they didn't want mountain bikes there all the time. So now I've just talked to, um, Pete at Green County. He thinks it's gonna be fine. Um, just gotta run it by their board of commissioners. And then we also have Johnson County who just approved it last night at their rec department.
So all of this activity would go on outside of the ballparks? I mean, this would be in the woods.
In the woods where the existing trails are. And we would not construct trails at this point. We would just use the existing in the future. If we ever did wanna like make some really great, you know, flowy trails that people travel to from outside the community um, and inside, you know, just some really great trails like you see across the nation. That would be a master plan that we would have professional design. You guys would have to approve. Then you'd have to have engineer drawings. You guys would have to approve. We would not do anything construction-wise without approval.
The only concern, you saying something, Lee? The only concern that I really had was, this event I have no problem with personally taking the trail and using it because they've got the insurance, they're gonna supply it. We get a copy of their policy. I'm, I'm more what you said was asking before. After this event, uh, the use of the trail, I'm a little concerned and you saying we wouldn't be liable under that Georgia Outdoor.
Recreation Act.
You might wanna check into that, but that's my concern. Either we notify our insurance and see what it does to it. That makes, I'm, I'm more concerned after this event. This event I'm fine with.
And I guess since that question's being asked, what are the expectations from your group after this one event? And are you expecting a certain time period designated for your group every year as compared to, because I would, you know, it's like anything else. Once you start it, somebody else is gonna try to do something a little different and wanna offer it and wanna have a certain date. Um, so I just wanna know what the expectations are with your group, um, for using that facility and when it can be used. So if you can comment on that, that'd be great.
Yeah, so we host a camp one week in the summer. Then again, we would be there, you know, we'd pick one Saturday a month so everybody would know, you know, we're gonna be in Panora Ballpark uh, first Saturday of the month, for instance. I'm not sure which Saturday it would be yet. Um, so we would have a monthly presence and then we also would have a winter workshop, so a three-day longer winter workshop we wanna do in each of these communities, again, to see these kids again. Um, but as far as like sharing the space with others, like if somebody else wants to do something and it happens to be in the same time, um, mountain bikers are, but mountain bicyclists, it sounds like you have an engine on your bike when you say mountain bikers. Mountain bicyclists are really good at sharing these trails because we have to in order to get these agreements from all over the nation where we do these things. So like again, we would have a meeting with the equestrian group here in town, just to let the equestrian group who are using that trail know we're gonna be out here, we're gonna have camp this week and we'll be here, so they'll know. It's an open communication. As far as renting any sort of pavilion, if it's available, that might be something we wanna do. But, um, one of our sites is at the landfill in Sparta. We're changing up, the landfill is, it's getting ready to get closed. Um, so they don't even have the pipes in the ground anymore. There's nothing out there. So I say this because we are prepared to show up on a site and bring everything we need. So we wouldn't need to share facilities if there was a conflict.
Yeah, I was just saying, is there an expectation that you wanna be there, say, June 15th, every year for your summer camp? If somebody wanted, somebody else wanted to use that same weekend, you know, because we talk about partnership and that, and again, that, that gives me a little concern. And so I just wanna know what the expectation's going to be. Are you expecting a, a, a particular month every year, a particular week? Or is it just you're gonna call and say, hey, can we do it this weekend? And we're gonna say no because somebody else is out there.
This, this looks like it's ongoing from what I'm reading. It was, I mean, there's wintertime stuff, there's one Saturday a month. This is, it's not a one-time deal. It's an ongoing.
Right.
We wouldn't wanna reserve the park. We would just wanna let you guys know that we're there and so other users would be there as well. I don't know that, could you, do you guys ever rent out the whole park?
Other users could use it while you're using it.
That's right.
So if you had bikes on there and my grandsons wanna go out there, mountain bikes, they could bike the same time your group is biking.
Okay, so no exclusive use, I guess. I should ask it that way.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
What about the standards of upkeep? I know there, do we have those? Have you provided those to us?
So there is the, um, Sorba, it's referenced in the Sorba MOU. Um, there is the Sorba, it's like sweet single-track manual. And that, those are the standards for, um, trail building, trail upkeep. I ha, uh, I either have it in my bag, I think I have it in my bag, you guys.
We're agreeing to that, so I'd like to know what that means. Does it mean that we were paving it or does it mean we keep the bushes out of the way? Does that mean, you know, how much are we spending on upkeep up and above what we're already doing? And, you know, the MOU states up to your standards. We, I don't know what your standards are.
Yeah, 'cause you know, I don't, I don't even mind spending some money on the upkeep.
Yeah, as long as we know what it is.
One of the complaints we have is that all we have is baseball and football wherever in this county or, and to have things like biking would be great.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to that. I love the idea. Just wanna make sure we're covered. The other thing I would say, there's three things. It's an ongoing thing. Uh, the standards of upkeep and the last thing for me would be, can we be listed additional insured on your, your GL?
You already are.
Oh, yeah, 'cause it says certificate holder and I don't see where it shows this certificate as additional insured.
I just want the, that insurance, if, if the MOU doesn't say that, Lee, I'd want the, the MOU to say that, that we'd be supplied with and named according to what you think we need to make sure we're covered for an event.
Right, and that's what I was getting at with if there's gonna be other kids out there. You know, if one of your kids is riding the bike and it runs into Wesley's grandson that just happens to be out there, it's just those type of liability issues. That's why I'm just trying to figure out what you're gonna actually do there. How long is it gonna be done? Is it gonna take up the whole track that day? You know, are you gonna have your, your folks on bikes and there's other kids in between? Because they're just using it that day, um, just kinda how these things work, just 'cause it's something new for us. So we just wanna, we don't wanna dive into it just because there's money available and it gets everybody excited. We just wanna kinda see in practice, how's it actually gonna work? I mean, have you done this at other, um, counties now that you've had events at? And, and what kinda, again, what are the expectations there and how often and, um, how is that working out?
Right, so it's all about managing risk. So we have done this before in Washington County. Um, what we do as far as managing risk about, like, if kids wanted to share the trails at the same time. I am a landscape architect. I thrive on design, specifically sign design. I'm a sign nerd. So I have already designed the signs and just need to get them printed, like real estate signs that we put in the ground at each of our sites that say, "Trail flows this way." And if there was other people that showed up, you know, we just, they didn't have to follow our rules, but we would just let them know, hey, everybody's flowing this way so we don't have a head-on collision. So it's about managing risk as much as you can. Um, it's a public site, so it's the same as when you have a road bicycle ride on a public road. These currently are public trails. So like if you were having a road bicycle ride on a public road and there was one not in the event and one in the event and they had an accident, your people from your event are covered under insurance. And, you know, the other person, again, out, Georgia Outdoor Recreation Act, but.
I hear what you're saying about that act, but I, I don't think it's, it's the silver bullet that says, hey, we can let anybody on our property as long as we're not charging them. There are ways around it, right? Good lawyers are gonna make great arguments and it's not gonna prevent us from being dragged into a, a big lawsuit. You know, especially if a kid gets really hurt and has a, you know, closed head injury. Um, those are the risks that are there. And, um, I just, again, it's just things that just cross my mind when, when you have a bunch of kids. It's just fair questions to ask. We really didn't vet any of this last time you came. Um, so I knew this was gonna be a better time to get more information, so then they can decide on what they wanna do. I'm not sure I'm gonna recommend tonight that they sign it.
Do, do, do you need another, maybe to the next meeting to, I guess a couple of things. Can we give a direction that they, 'cause they need to plan, it's coming up soon, that they could move forward with this event? But they need to have you review the MOU, make the additions, corrections, things that you feel like would protect us.
Yeah, I mean, if, if there are trails out there, nothing needs to be done, right? What would prevent you from going out there and using it anyway?
Um, what we, what we would like to do with the Sorba MOU, just before we do any, you know, you do wanna clear sightline so you can see somebody coming around the curve, you know, so that's just like taking pruners and pruning some branches at sightline off of the shrubs on the inside of the curb. Before we could even do any of that, we would want an MOU signed for the Sorba trail work. Um, so we would not do any, we would not do anything on site before we had an MOU with you guys. So we would just have to find a new site in town, which.
So what you're saying though, basically, they, they just need permission to clean up and make it ready for their event because they're working on county property. You, I hear you saying that, you know, what's to stop anybody from using that trail and running their bike on it? Nothing.
Right.
So what they need from us is.
Who's using it now? I mean, I've seen kids out there playing ball and everything, but I've never noticed any bike riding. But I wonder where we cut trails out there. Are these?
There are.
Be riding, there's all kind of, when I've been by there.
So to my point, what they really need is MOU to be able to work on that trail to get ready for their event. And we're, am I thinking wrong? I mean, if people can use it anywhere, they could go out there and use it as it is, but they can't because they won't make sure it's safe. They got line of sight and they've got directions and so forth.
Right, and I guess that just gets back to my point of, if you can go out there and do it, and kinda what's the purpose of the MOU now? You know, I mean, if you, I mean.
Cover us.
Right, you're gonna have insurance in place to cover you to go do this.
One point of the MOU is to work on it. They can't work on county property and cut limbs without our permission.
But the MOU says we're gonna maintain it.
No, but this first time, they're gonna do this. Is that in here?
So the, the MOU says that we will have trail workdays and then we'll work with you guys to come up with an agreement on the level of maintenance.
And, whi, which is not, um, whi, which is not substantial. Um, and it's not very difficult to maintain the trails. They, they tend to maintain themselves. It really is just a matter of, uh, basically taking, uh, a, like a gator, uh, out there, um, on a off, I mean, however often it is and just making sure that the trails are essentially clear.
Well, the horses are keeping that trail fertilized for sure.
So the maintenance is not, is not necessarily the, uh, an issue for us particularly there. It's just not that, it's not a lot of trails.
So you've seen their, the Sorb, the Sega Sorba rules and regulations as far as trails go? And you're okay with that? Cause they've got their own set of rules for maintenance, aside from what we would normally do. I don't know, that may be very liberal or may be extensive. That's what, we, we don't, I don't know. I haven't seen it.
Okay.
But I don't even know how they could require us to do it. There's no payment in this.
And it's an MOU saying we're liable for that maintenance.
Says we're liable?
I wanna know, yeah. I wanna know what that maintenance is before I would sign off on it. I mean, if, if it's very low-key and easy to do, I'm sure I'm awful.
Yeah, honestly, it isn't.
Yeah, honestly, it isn't. Nothing in this memorandum shall obligate Effingham County to the Georgia High Low Trail to expend appropriations or to enter in any contract or other obligation.
It's not a contract, it's the MOU of understanding what we would be considering.
That's my whole thing, it's just like, you're right, it's not a contract. Something is like, why are we entering into it? I mean, if you want to give them permission to go out there and use it, give them permission to go use it.
Yeah, we don't need a memorandum of understanding for that.
Right, and that's what I, and again, no offense, right?
Do certain things to it as well without.
This was the questions I probably had last time we should have, we've, I should have asked. You know, what's the expectation? To me, there's an expectation, and we use that word partnership, what's the expectation from the county? I mean, that's not what I'm hearing, I guess. Because if you're just wanting to use it, it'd be like renting a pavilion and having a party. It's kind of that same thing, we just give you permission to go out there and use it for your event on whatever weekend you, you want to use it for.
Lee, can we do this so that they could plan? And because I, I hope, I would love to see this actual opportunity for bike riding. Can we have you restructure the MOU to take out the idea of a partnership, but a memorandum of understanding, authorizing them to make appropriate corrections to the trail or additions to the trail maintenance? That's what you need to be able to work on it to get it ready for their event. Understanding that they're going to provide liability insurance for any events they hold out there.
Right.
Something very simple like that.
Sure, yeah, that'd be fine, I mean, it would be through that event and then.
Could you look at the?
I'm not sure that's what, what the expectation is, right? I mean, if there's going to be more events and more.
Is that sufficient?
Right, just, yes, this would work. I have been, you know, all of this is new for me, getting these agreements to work and make trails, you know, getting a grant, because you just want to teach kids how to ride a bike, opens a big old can of worms. And here we are. So I have been through, you know, all the right avenues and Sega Sorba, Sorba as a national organization have, they've been the one who told me, it's just good practice to get an MOU with each of your land managers where you're going to have a site. It's just good practice. So if there's a tree that falls, you can call them and you can say that you already have a relationship and they know, hey, we've got some volunteers that are going to go over there and cut down the tree.
I think that's great, I think we can construct that and make that move forward. I think what our attorney is suggesting is we've had organizations come to us nonprofit, want us to partner with them to do this or that. And once we open that can, everybody's going to want to, well, you partner with them, what's your partner? So I think if we could do it as an MOU that allows you to use the property for your events and do the work that you need to do to construct it. And even it can share how we might help support in maintenance of it, because I'd be for some support of the maintenance of it, you know?
Yeah, as long as I know what that is.
Can I ask, Lee, on this, I mean, there's no, under the MOU, there's, there's no legal obligation on the county on this. My understanding is the issue is what happens after this event? Does it continue on? And I think the, if, if that's the case, since we are running into a situation where we have to go out and get kids to go to this camp and coming back on the seventh might be essentially too late to do that, would there be an issue for approving this until the end of the month and then coming back to do a permanent one that meets all of your concerns?
Yeah, I mean, that's why.
Okay, so essentially approving this as is, but with a termination date of June 30th?
June 30th, that gets to the event, then we can make sure we satisfy Lee's concerns, which we appreciate his advice very much.
And then, and then we'll work on the, a more permanent agreement.
Because I think we'd all like to see this additional recreational activity.
Yeah, this one, right.
I'd like to see it, I don't know if we're getting bogged down and, because kids are going to ride the bikes out there.
Get you on a bike.
We're not giving them permission to go. You said there's ATVs, I mean.
Yeah, if ATVs are out there, then we got a problem.
We got, there's going to be a problem. How are you going to keep that from being exclusive when there are ATVs out there? You know, that could kill a kid.
I mean, but, I mean, if there's an event with a bunch of kids, I would think they would see it.
We might need to put a sign out there if we don't need ATVs, no ATVs.
Well, that's why I said at the beginning.
Police out there.
We need to figure out if we want to get in the business of doing this. Because if there's horses out there, ATVs and bicycles, we probably need to figure out what we want for that particular piece of property. And if this is going to be a part of it, I think the recreation department probably needs to, it needs to fall under that umbrella and then treat it like everything else that the county maintains.
Well, how about if we entertain a motion to approve this MOU for a period not to exceed June 30th? And that allows them to plan, go ahead and do the trail. And then we can come back and look to Lee's question, how much do we want an ATV? Do we want horses out there? What do we need to do? What do we need to stop or what do we need to approve? Okay? So I'm going to see if we can move forward by entertaining a motion to approve the MOU with the termination date of this MOU right now of June 30th.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Deloach, Second Mr. Loper, to approve the MOU with a termination date of June 30th of the MOU, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. I'll get you moving forward and we'll have some discussion and be ready to maybe support more biking as we go along.
We are going to invite all county commissioners and city councilmen out to our last day of camp for a celebration. We'll have a closing ceremony day, so it's a good chance it'll be Friday, June 24th. You can come in the morning or the evening, kind of witness what, what we're doing.
Thank you so much, please appreciate it.
Please make some calls if you see ATVs and stuff out there when you guys are out there.
You will, you'll see them.
That, that could be very dangerous.
They used to be on the ball fields.
Yeah, keep them off the ball fields, eh? Alrighty, item number nine, thank you so much. I know it's a lot of work and a lot of politic negotiation, but we'll try to work through it and get, get where you need to be.
Mr. Chairman, if we can go back to new business number one.
Yes, alright, good to see you. We're going to go back and have a special recognition on item number one. Approval of a rev, resolution 22-025 to recognize Abicorne Baptist Church's 200th anniversary. You want to come forward? I'm sure if you, if I could read it?
Sure.
We can present it.
Yes, sir, so staff was approached by, staff was approached by a representative for the church requesting that this resolution be approved by you all. And it reads as follows, recognition of the Abicorne Baptist Church's 200th anniversary. Whereas the village of Abicorne was established in the year of 1733, ten families settled there, waiting along with their pastor for their homes to be built in Ebenezer. In a short period of time, Abicorne provided unsuitable for the Salzburger families and Abicorne was again abandoned to take, to take its place among the other void towns of Georgia. And whereas, as history revealed, eighty-eight years later, the saga of Abicorne lived again in October 1882. Founders were the late Reverend James Swett and the late Reverend Henry Cook. The church was controlled by white ministers until the war between the states began. After peace was declared, the late Reverend U.L. Houston and other ministers led the church, namely Reverend Andrew Johnson and Reverend B.A. Lanier during the early years. And whereas, several pastors were called to serve between the years of 1929 to 1961. Within this time period, the church was destroyed by fire. Six months later, the church stone was laid and the church was soon rebuilt. And whereas, on May 26, 1975, the church was moved to its present location on Old Augusta Road. Sunday school, Bible study and several other activities resumed along with discussion to erect a new building. And whereas, years later, sketches of plans were provided to Mr. Lee Meyer Building and Architecture on March 11th, 2002. The groundbreaking for a new edifice was held to include, to, was held to include two sitting commissioners in attendance, Homer Wallace and Philip King. And whereas, on Sunday, April 12, 2005, the church body moved into the new sanctuary where they continue to share its fellowship and worship. Therefore, a celebratory event will be held on June 5th to, I'm sorry, that's going to be a correction. Be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Effingham County, Georgia, to join the Abicorne Baptist family in celebrating this 200-year commemoration of the Abicorne Baptist Church. We further honor the forefathers and foremothers who graciously laid the foundation to establish this edifice of refuge and pillar of comfort for this community. Humbly submitted the 17th day of May in the year of our Lord 2022.
All right, would you like to say anything, Mr. White?
Yes, I'd just like to say, thank you all very much for, for doing this, we truly appreciate it. And you all are invited. That Sunday afternoon, I will be closing out the services, bringing the word that Sunday evening at 4:00 PM, the first Sunday in June. And you certainly all are invited to be there. Thank you so very, very much on behalf of Abicorne Baptist Church.
The Houston church at Port Wentworth, was that named after this Houston?
That pastor guy.
I always wondered.
Yeah. That's, that's historical site too, there's a lot of stuff to see in that, if anybody want to go down and see that. Thank you all again, appreciate it very much.
One of the spiritual roots of this community are, are long and deep. And I think it needs to continue to be a reminder for us as we make decisions that shape the community for the future as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White, appreciate all you do in the community. We read the resolution, have a motion to approve the resolution.
Make a motion to approve the resolution as presented.
Sir? Motion by Mr. Kiefer, Second Mr. Loper, to approve the resolution as presented, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. You looking for my blue pen?
Yeah, you got a blue pen?
I have my blue pen, I went over there, there it is. Alright, very good, that takes care of that item, we'll go down to number nine. On the new business, consideration to approve change order number three. Construction related to, this is with Greenland Architects, construction related to changes at the administrative complex.
Good evening again, Commissioners, Eric Larson, Assistant County Manager. This is a change order with copper construction, the people that did the remodeling of this building. This is kind of a summary change order to final out the, the contract and all the additional things that happened in those final days of construction. If, if you look through your packet, you'll see the summary of some of those changes. It was additional flooring, it was additional carpentry and adding of rooms to spaces that were going to be open floor plan. It was data drops and electrical drops and H, H, all kinds of AV adds. As we got into the building and we started figuring out how we were going to set it up, all these last-minute things always pop up. So there's a pretty detailed change order attached to the staff report. It is the third change order for, for copper. And you have in your staff report, I won't read them, but you see the summary of the change orders we've had up until this point. This summary change order, which is the closeout change order for the project, is $76,914.01. We went ahead and added calendar time to the project because we had not been doing so. And we added an appropriate amount of calendar days, 140 days. And that brings the completion date of the project in January 8th, although we were in the room with, building with substantial completion back on November 1st. So far, far more than enough days added to the contract for that.
There's no punch list items, everything's done?
We are waiting on a couple of punch list items, those are going to be no cost to us, but they're going to come back and do some carpet tiles. We still have a door upstairs that has to be replaced and repainted. Just a couple of, of minor punch list items, but there's no, there's not anything that's going to cause additional cost.
No, I was saying, I'm saying, if we approve this tonight, do we need to hold our check until they get the punch list?
Well, we got the, we got the retainer.
You still got the retainer?
Yes, sir, yeah, so this is not including the retainer, this is just approving it so that we can do the final invoice, but the retainer is still withheld at this point.
Any questions, discussion from the board?
Which one was Greenland Architects to change?
That's the one that changed.
So this is not copper, it's green line?
It's copper, it's not green line.
Oh, it's not green.
Oh, I have the correct one.
Okay, I got it backwards.
I thought so, I said, so copper, you said, no, it's green line.
No, no, your corrected agenda should have green lines strike through.
Oh, you thought I was asking which one was struck through?
Mine just says copper.
No, I was asking which was the right architect.
The right one is copper.
Right one is copper, okay, I got that backwards.
I couldn't figure out why green line was struck through if it was the right one. Okay, copper.
That's just the agenda, the, the actual change order is correct.
Right, right, right. Okay, motion for alternative one.
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kiefer, motion by Mr. Burdette, sorry, second by Mr. Kiefer, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Who's got my blue pen?
Oh, I passed it now.
I don't want to lose my blue pen, that thing's a hard to come by. Item number 10. Approval to award a contract for 2021 full-depth reclamation with asphalt emulsion, FDR E, roads resurfacing project expenditure, expenditures.
Again, Eric Larson, Assistant County Manager. We put the design of the FDR project, which is TSPLOS-funded, under contract with Robert Civil Engineering back in June 15th of 2021. And they prepared a design package and a, and a mix, a payment design and bid package, excuse me, for the roads included in our FDR program. And we paid them a contract of $449,285. We put out RF, we put out an invitation to bid for construction of the FDR E project in February 23rd, 2022. That includes the roads and I'm just going to list them out here for significance in a minute when I talk about the prioritization. Those were Courthouse Road Extension, Archer Road, Bethany Road, Bird Road, Clark Road, Corinth Church Road, Floyd Avenue, Old Augusta Road North, Old Dixie Highway South, Whittaker Road, Mount Pleasant Road and Scuffletown Road. We had a base bid for chip seal with a hot mix alternative to that. The funding that we had for TSPLOS for this FDR was approximately 7.5 million. We did advertise, I, we've included the extensive advertising that was done to get vendors to show interest in this project and make sure we were contacting contractors. We had a mandatory pre-bid in which we had eight potential bidders registered. But when bids were due on April 18th, we, we did not receive any bids. We contacted some of the registered bidders to ask them why they didn't bid. There was a little bit of confusion with those who intended to sub with others that were in attendance that day. But we, what we have done is we entered into a negotiation with the most qualified prime contractor that was registered. These are FDR E contractors that can act as a prime, not be a sub to someone else. And that was significant for what we were wanting to do, and that was to get someone under contract to do these projects. That was Ranger Construction. Ranger has given us a proposal to do all the roads in the package for $15,485,303, which obviously far exceeds our budget. We have, after paying design fees, we have approximately $7 million in funds with TSPLOS available. What we are recommending is a contract with Ranger Construction in the amount of $7,080, $7,85,068.50. And we have established a prioritization by talking with, with the commissioners in the districts that have roads included. And I'll list those roads by priority. It is Scuffletown Road, Corinth Church Road, Archer Road, Old Augusta Road, Dixie Highway and Mount Pleasant. The contractor has been told that we will start with those roads and our contract will be for the $7,85,000. And we will do as many roads on that list until we run out of funds or more funds become available and we can change order those in at a future date. The roads that do not get treatment through this contract will be put on our next list of roads that would come with a future TSPLOS or a future FDR project. And I'll also been, have also told Public Works to consider putting them on the chip seal list as, as high priority. So when they start their chip seal program back up with the new equipment, they can do repairs to these roads that aren't going to get covered by this contract.
Let me just clarify that, some of that too. We have two processes by which we, or actually three processes by which we address ash roads. And for the ash roads that are generally more, that A, have a strong chip seal base already and B, are not your primary roads, are generally considered neighborhood roads, they don't get a lot of truck traffic, they don't get a lot of high speeds. Those, a lot of those, we have. Um, those, um, a lot of those, we have been using, uh, a different, um, solution on, which is a, uh, which is brushing them down, uh, putting them a coarse layer of asphalt at first, leveling them out. Uh, that coarse layer allows, uh, any moisture that's in the ash to escape up, um, into the, uh, has an area for it to escape up, so it doesn't, uh, cause the, uh, uh, cause the top, um, layer of asphalt, uh, to, uh, uh, to crumble or split or, um, uh, uh, I forget the word I'm looking for, but it, it, uh, it protects the top layer of asphalt. Uh, we've done that on roads. I'll give you some particular examples, um, Mill Pond, uh, we did that on, um, Timbergate. Uh, and so we think some of these roads on this list, um, uh, would, uh, fall into that, and we will try and get them on a future L Meg contract, um, uh, for those. Uh, these other roads like Scuffletown, Archer, um, uh, these roads that are on this list are either higher traffic roads, um, uh, so that you, you don't want to use this, uh, treatment on it, uh, or they are in such poor shape, um, that we, uh, simply cannot, um, do that other treatment option on. Uh, and so just take that in consideration. They, they are T S P L O S roads, and we are going to, um, we are going to have them a listed T S P L O S road, so we are going to have them addressed.
Was Courthouse Road Extension elimi- eliminated from that?
No, um, that one, we're probably going to have to do at a separate contract. Um, it's just because it's so big, um, and, um, we have to, um, uh, and we could, um, have these guys kind of look at it and determine whether we want towards the end of this contract to change order that in there. Um, but, um, that's probably the more ex, most expensive out of all of them. Um, and I, um, and so that could be an op, that could be an option. If not, we're going to have to, uh, find funding for it, um, later on down the road. The problem is, uh, what has driven these costs up is the cost of emulsion. Uh, and emulsion is the, is a petrochemical, so it's, it's driven by the cost of oil. Uh, and, um, and so that's, uh, had that not occurred and the emulsion prices were where they were, uh, two or three years ago, um, we, uh, we would be able to get all these roads done. Um, so.
Yeah, I talked with Ergon today, and that's what they said. They got the thick crude from Russia, and now we're getting it from Canada, and that's really been a big cost driver.
Yeah.
But one thing, I want you all to truly understand, I've got people on this list that I've been telling for two years to their face on the phone, you vote for T S P L O S, bam, your road's done. So that is putting me in a horrible, I mean, I feel like I'm about to throw up right now. I mean, this.
I don't think any of those were a district we wanted. This is asking about Courthouse Road Extensions.
I mean, I mean, wha- what am I supposed to say now? I mean, I mean, I know cost and all that, but I mean, I've been telling them for two years.
I know.
Well, well, the option two, I mean, the, the, the trouble is, right, is that we only got so much money. Um, and so if it was a small amount over budget, we can normally, you know, come in and figure out a way to absorb it. Um, uh, these, um, I think we're probably better off in, um, just simply, uh, putting on the L Meg list for this year. And that's why I said, I'm not going to, I don't want to do chip seal because chip seal, uh, is, uh, effectively not what we promised. Uh, and so, uh, these folks want these roads paved, uh, the secondary solution will get them paved. We, the one that we have to figure out, and we may change order that in here, uh, based on how things perform, uh, is the courthouse, is courthouse extension. Uh, but the other ones, um, the other ones are going to get done, and they'll get done, uh, with the L Meg contract.
Eighteen million include courthouse extension?
What'd say?
This is alternative two include courthouse extension?
Uh, yeah, alternative two does include it. So that, um, so we basically, yeah, so the, I'm sorry, um, so the, so the, we, we gave a couple of options there, um, up to that dollar figure, then, uh, then to, to limit those roads, and then to include courthouse extension there as well.
How much is courthouse extension in that eighteen million?
What'd say?
How much is courthouse extension?
All right. I'll tell you, I'll look it up here.
Okay. They've broken it out, so they'll, he can tell me in a second.
Because, because I, I hear what, um, Commissioner Loach is saying, and I think we've all have kind of said that even though, uh, I'm not to a particular district, I've represented to all the district, you approve T S P L O S and it's done. We can do things we couldn't get done. I know last year we had some surplus from the audit. I can't tell you what it is, because I have an audit in front of me.
Yeah.
But I'm not sure we don't need to go ahead tonight and say we're going to use that, because we talked about some of our other excess you and I have about going back and seeing what more, what additional roads we could do. Well, maybe we can't do additional roads, but let's take that excess and do it on the roads we already said we were going to do it on.
Well, we can do, and so, so, you know, I mean, i- if you wanted to do that priority list, uh, and then do, uh, and then including courthouse extension, just simply adds one point one million dollars, uh, to that. Uh, and then the other ones will get the asphalt treatment as part of L Meg. Um, and when is that?
But what, what, why do we need, we got other properties we could use L Meg for, why don't we just?
No, no, I'm sorry. It's not, it's not, it's not using L Meg money, it's using the L Meg contract, um, because it's, it would be part of a, of a standard repaving, and so we'd include it. We can do a separate repaving contract just for these roads.
That's going to make us wait to the next year to do it, right?
Well, no, uh, when is L Meg?
We haven't advertised, we haven't advertised L Meg twenty tw- twenty twenty-two yet, so we can add roads to it in addition to the three that we've already approved, and that's the L Meg funding, those three.
As long as it gets done in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, I'm good.
Yeah, then that's what we're saying.
So I think all these roads we need to address, we have to use our surplus that was generated last year through a better economy than we expected, um, and, and let's get it done because I think we're going to run awry if we do not do this, we come back, because we have a lot of more transportation needs. Um, I think it'd be a great investment personally to.
And I know you and I have, have talked at length on my list, and, and I agree, I, I don't think every one on my list here, or the second part of the list necessarily has to be F D R. I mean, it's some of them that the contractor told us F D R, there's such bad shape, that is the only option.
Right.
Um, so I think there's, I know the, the cheaper solution, I, I think could work on quite a few of the roads that were on my list, but, um, I think we need to try to define a, um, a quick timeline of, of how we respond and let these folks know that it's going to be a second list.
Well, we've, you've already approved, um, you've already got the list approved on, on the, for the L Meg funds, right? And so that contract, you know, within the next.
We were, we were going to advertise it within the next thirty, sixty days. We're still working on bid package.
Yeah, so that, that should be, um, you know, within thirty or sixty days, we should be, um, uh, we should have that out there. Uh, we, we can push to get it closer to thirty, um, and then, uh, so that they can start this, you know, uh, summer, probably end of the summer, fall, uh, for the roads, for the roads on this list, including, uh, Sand Hill and then the other, uh, other two that were on the L Meg list.
So you're talking about doing, on the second list, the ones that are at the bottom of the F D R list.
The green.
They would be able to start possibly this summer or fall on that list?
On that list.
Okay. And Ranger is going to be able to start fairly quickly?
Yes.
On, on theirs?
Yeah.
So most likely, we would still start in twenty twenty-two?
That's right. The only question mark was really courthouse extension because, you know, it, it, it threw it all, uh, up there, but we can, um, you know, we can make adjustments with non-T S P L O S money, uh, to, uh, to include that in there as well.
Yeah, and so I guess what I'm saying is if there's a less expensive way to, to get an asphalt surface on these roads that we told them we'd get asphalt surfaces on, let's do it. But if we need to prove the seven million tonight, get them started.
And, well, if you include the se- seven million tonight plus courthouse?
Plus courthouse, get the contract going, and then go ahead and, all the roads that were on our T S P L O S, let's make sure we get them done. If we have to use general fund monies, so be it.
Okay.
Just come back to us with a, a proposed funding from our reserve to, to address those so we can get all the roads in that eighteen million done. Maybe we can get down to fifteen by doing some lesser work, but.
Courthouse need to include the alternate?
What?
There's an alternate.
Oh, yeah, yeah, then it does, that, that it does, includes asphalt.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and we want to get it done because we know we got more transportation needs.
What about the rest of the, the roads? Is this like a phase one of T S P L O S, or is this?
What, what roads are you?
Well, I mean, the first T S, I'm reading.
The only road, I mean, we've done all the repaving, uh, we've got to, what we haven't done on repaving is Hodgville, which are waiting, which we're waiting for the intersection improvements to get done first.
Okay.
Uh, Goshen Road, uh, those two are, are contracts that have yet to be let.
Okay.
Um, but.
Midland as well.
Uh, but i- isn't Midland a, um, intersection?
Uh, yes.
Yeah.
It's turned later.
Yeah, so that, that's under design. Um, that was awarded to Roberts, yeah.
That's in, in progress. Uh, Scuffletown, I mean, of course, everybody knows about that road. Um, time, timeline on, on that one?
Well, we did let him know on the Scuffletown, um, and I discussed it with, uh, with other commissioners as well, um, to, um, please try and prioritize that, particularly since summertime is coming up and you want to get that over when school's not going on.
When school's out, is there any way? Because it's, it's become such a thoroughfare, is that possible to do, or?
To what?
Is that possible to do it when school is out, since that's such a high priority road now, or?
Well, if we, if he gets mobilized over the summer, makes that the priority road to start with, uh, and we gave him in the list of priority, um, then, yeah, we, we would get done over the summer.
Because we're only, I mean, two months go, will go by so fast, and the kids don't have out, they're not out very long.
So what I hear the direction from the board is, um, I'm going to entertain a motion in a minute for alternative one plus adding, um, courthouse extension.
Would that be alternative two?
No, alternative two is eighteen million, helps everything.
One plus courthouse.
Okay, okay, gotcha.
Alternative one plus courthouse extension, okay?
Okay.
Uh, ask for that motion just a minute, but the board, creepy from on the direction is, let's get all the roads that were supposed to be in this T S P L O S that was over budget, find a way to fund them through general fund or whatever, let's get them done in the time of our T S P L O S monies.
Sure.
Okay? That's on, everybody's on the page. All right, we'll entertain a motion for alternative one with the addition of adding to that seven million, eighty-five thousand, sixty-eight fifty, the cost of, um, courthouse extension.
So moved.
Sorry. Okay, motion by Mr. Deloach, second by Mr. Floyd, is that what I heard? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Hearing none, it passes. And that, that excites me that we're going to get all the T S P L O S promises done, even if we have to use some general fund monies. Okay. Item number eleven.
Just a real quick question on the T S P L O S, isn't there a, are we liable to, once we announce T S P L O S roads, don't we have to use?
No.
If you don't, if you don't receive the proceeds.
You don't do it.
I see.
Or, or costs come above. Uh, S P L O S is slightly different than that. S P L O S, you have an obligation where you have to like, um, vote to remove projects and so on and so forth, but T S P L O S does not. But at this point, I think it looks like we're going to get all the projects done.
You wouldn't have to vote to remove it if you didn't have funds for it.
Right.
You, you can only remove it, if you have funds for it, you can only remove it. It becomes no longer feasible because of whatever reason. There's things you got to jump through. That's why we do the projects for more than we did, because we didn't want to come short. And as it turns out, it's a good thing we went high.
Yeah.
With the bottom line, we obligated to it, and we needed to deliver.
Yeah, that's.
Whatever we got to do.
Feel the same way. You know, we've told everybody what we're going to do, announced it, put it in the paper, let's find a way to get it done.
Yeah. We're not going to do the blame game. It's, it's not our fault, inflation's there and the cost skyrocketed.
If we've got a way to do it, let's do it.
The blame game is going to come back on us, let's just get it done.
All right.
Okay. All right, item number eleven, consideration to approve to award a contract for construction of twenty twenty T S P L O S intersection, Collichamley, at South Effingham Elementary School Project. I guess that's what S E E C is, okay?
Once again, Eric Larson, Assistant County Manager. You should have a revised staff report in front of you that has the recommendation of Griffin Contracting in the summary recommendation. I'm going to be reading from that one. Uh, this is the first of the ten intersections that were awarded to Robert Civil Engineering for design under the T S P L O S funding, as we were just discussing. Um, that contract was awarded to Roberts back in December of last year, and, uh, the approximate design, well, it's not the approximate, the design fee for this intersection alone was seventy-two thousand, two forty-two. Uh, on April fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, we put a bid package together for, uh, what we refer to as bid package number one of the intersections, it is just for this one project, Collichamley Road and the turn lanes into the S, uh, South Effingham Elementary School. We put that out in April fourteenth. Uh, our budget for construction on this was seven twenty-six, oh, fifty-eight, that was the remaining funds as allocated by the T S P L O S referendum. Uh, you see the amount of advertising that we did on the project and the number of vendors that were contacted statewide and locally. Uh, we did have a mandatory pre-bid where we had four potential bidders present, and on yesterday, the sixteenth, we received one bid from Griffin Contracting, uh, hence your revised staff report, uh, because I couldn't finish it up until I got the bid yesterday. Their bid was six seventy-seven, eight oh-four, which does bring us in under budget for that particular line item. Uh, Robert Civil and I have reviewed their bid and found it to be complete and responsive, and are recommending Griffin Contracting for this project in the amount of six seventy-seven, eight oh-four.
How much under budget did it come?
About forty-eight thousand dollars under budget.
It's forty-eight thousand for your other projects?
I can roll it over to F D R now.
Yes, sir. So this is just the intersection where it meets thirty?
This is at the school, this is the turn lanes at the school.
At the school itself?
Yes, this is, this is, we're doing this project because of the accelerated schedule. They have told they have to mobilize. Thought I had that in here, but I don't see it. Uh, they're mobilizing next week if you approve, they're mobilizing next week, and they are required to get this built by August second, second or third, remember?
August third.
Yeah, August third.
When are we back in school on the third?
That's the day, that's the day before they start school, yes, sir.
Thank you, that'd be great.
With liquidated damages if they don't.
Yes.
Uh, motion by Mr. Burdette to approve alternative one to have a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Floyd, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Hearing none, it passes unanimously.
Thank you, that's been a long time coming.
All right, item number twelve, consideration to approve a warranty deed from the Effingham County Industrial Development Authority to accept an easement located off of Old River Road at Savannah, uh, Portside International Park, phase one.
Uh, we, we have a guest that's going to do my staff report for me, which is perfectly fine with me.
Good afternoon.
It does have my name on the staff report, but it is for the, uh, entrance road to the Savannah Portside International Park, and, uh, I'll let, I'll let our guest speak.
Yeah, Mr. Ted Corellis at the podium tonight, if you want to go ahead and share with us.
Eric Larson, Jr., Ted Corellis. Uh, first, I'd like to make a presentation. This is a blue ink pen, Mr. Chairman, so I'd like.
Is it better mine? I bet it's got Ted Corellis.
Ted's name on it, probably.
Thank you, sir.
As, as Eric said.
Blue pens, I'm glad.
This is.
Sorry, there's no solicitation in this building.
This is the, uh, entry road to the, uh, Savannah Portside International Park off, uh, Old River. Old River Road near I sixteen. The road's been built, it's not, this is the first long section of it, built to county standards. We're just turning it over to y'all, um, for maintenance purposes, and one of the tenants in the building cannot get trucks there because we're not on GPS, because it's not showing as a public road, so that's, that's the main purpose of trying to get it done. Down the road, the road will, down, well, down the road, the road will be extended, but after it's extended, it'll build to your standards and will be, that extension will be dedicated, so this is the first part.
Okay, any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Deloach, second by Mr. Loper to approve, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, thank you for the pen.
What are you going to name that road?
Already named.
Okay.
Savannah Portside International Parkway.
Ted, they'll still have a problem finding it for a while, so. Just because it's a county road, there's no guarantees.
Not really near Savannah or the port, but.
It, it ends up Floyd Avenue was already taken, so.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Item number thirteen, consideration to approve an award of a contract to pound upon, I'm sorry, uh, for twenty-twenty-two stormwater master plan project.
Uh, once again, Eric Larson, Assistant County Manager, this is for the engineering consultant, uh, to perform our, our stormwater master plan. Uh, if you recall, this po- project is fifty percent funded with a coastal incentive grant, and started this year and continues into next year. We prepared an R F P and sent it out to our six, uh, I D C engineering consultants that were pre-qualified for stormwater, uh, services. Um, four of those firms attended a mandatory pre-con- uh, pre-proposal conference, and three of those firms responded with a proposal. And you see the three listed there, Alliance, Pond, and W K Dixon. Uh, the, uh, lowest cost and the best proposal was from Pond and Company, and we're recommending Pond, uh, for the master plan with the total, with a project contract amount total not to exceed two hundred and twenty thousand six, two hundred and twenty thousand six hundred dollars, excuse me, okay.
When we get through the master plan for stormwater, what will we have, besides a master, I mean, what, what, what does it mean?
Well, similar to our water and sewer master plan or any of these master plans, we are going to do a hydraulic and hydrolid, hydro, hydrolo- sorry, hyd- hydrologic and hydraulic model of the county. This is a macro ten thousand foot type of model, but we look at our major streams, our major road crossings, and we look at our watersheds in the existing condition and the future condition. We're looking at both flooding, water quantity issues, and water quality issues. Industrial parks put off different types of pollutants than residential subdivisions. And so we use future land use maps to determine what our future growth patterns are going to be, and where the growth is going to happen, and what kind of hap- what kind of growth it's going to be. And we try to predict flooding problems and water quality problems in our receiving streams. This is mandated as part of the M S four program that you have an idea of the water quality of your receiving streams in your community. Uh, from this, we will get a list of capital projects, in addition to having the model that will be dynamic, we can edit it as new projects are proposed, how's this going to affect the watershed, that sort of thing. But in addition to that, we will get a capital improvement plan that will have a list of projects with, um, cost estimates for design and construction.
So it's going, so it's going to give us some, so it's going to take our land use plan that we're redoing right now, right? They're going to use that and determine based on if the growth goes to these areas and these roads are built, and this industry warehousing and non-performing surfaces, this is where the water's probably going to go, and this is the infrastructure you need to build or improve upon to make it go to the right places, okay? All that's going to be in that report.
We'll look at our existing system as well to see if there's any, anything that needs to be done to improve it or upgrade it, but also expand it, you know, adding additional, uh, culverts, bridges, ponds, retention ponds, restoration of streams that have degraded. It looks at all of that and puts together a capital program that you can use going forward with your stormwater program.
Reason I ask that, because every project that's done, they have to give a, a plan submitted to us, approved by Georgia Works Soil and Water that says, this water's not going to leave that property any faster, and they're going to build retention and detention, so I just didn't know, what are we really getting out of this, since we're already getting that done by project, if that makes sense?
Well, we haven't always had those rules, I'll, I'll explain it this way, sometimes these master plans identify sins of the past, and it brings in retrofitting projects to improve things that have already degraded.
So that's, that's where, that's going to be, not only is it required, but it's going to, I want something to benefit, so we're going to be able to look at some things we might need to correct.
Yes.
Because Georgia Soil, Soil and Water was not always maybe involved twenty, thirty years ago.
Correct.
I got you, okay.
And I think one other key thing is with regards to, um, necessary easements, uh, that the county doesn't control, uh, with regards to performance of the stormwater system, that, uh, it could also recommend, uh, where they're needed.
Great, I got you.
Uh, because we can't maintain what we don't own.
I got you, okay, makes sense.
It's, it's required that we do it for M S four permit, and it also lays a good foundation so that we know what stormwater's going to cost us going forward.
Yeah, if it'd been forty thousand required, I would have questioned it, but two hundred and twenty, so we gotta get some giddy out of this, so what exactly we're going to have in our hands? If we're going to get some easements we might need to buy and some things that we need to take care of, that'd be great, okay. Answers, any other questions? Motion to approve alternative one?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Deloach, second Mr. Floyd to approve alternative one, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Item number fourteen, consideration to approve an amendment to the task order with Alliance Consulting Engineers to provide consultant services to collect data along the Ogiechi Run, Little Ogiechi River related to the wasteload allocation.
More time, this is Eric Larson, Assistant County Manager, uh, we already have, um, Alliance Consulting Engineers under contract to do our water, wastewater and reuse master plan, and in a previous task order, we assigned them the, um, surface, surface water, surface discharge, excuse me, uh, at the Little, Little Ogiechi Run, we assigned them a task order to get this permitted for us, and the first task order was to do what was required by Georgia E P D, which was a tide study to prove that the discharge point was not tidally influenced. Uh, we've completed the study only to have E P D come back and ask if we collected salinity data, which was not originally requested of E P D. Uh, and so we are now going back to redeploy our probes to test or to measure salinity levels in the water for a period of fourteen days.
And this is the Ogiechi River in Effingham County?
Yes, sir. The Little Ogiechi Run, further up than the Ogiechi River.
Okay.
But this is, this is mandated by E P D and, um, you know, Alliance has given us these, these, uh, task orders with a fee not to exceed, uh, you know, as, 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 as cost effective as possible, they didn't give us any more than we needed, uh, but with E P D's comments, they kept, they requested the salinity, and that was not originally requested by E P D. Uh, they have that prerogative to change their mind after they, after they review the data, and, uh, so Alliance is asking for additional funds to redeploy the probes for additional testing.
I'm sorry, I'm.
It's just ninety-five hundred dollars is the difference.
Ninety-five hundred dollars for this task order, yes, sir.
Any question or discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by, uh, Mr. Deloach, second by Mr. Burdette to approve, this is alternative one, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item number fifteen, consideration to approve, I'm sorry, consideration to move all U G A Extension Office personnel off the county payroll and onto the contract with the University of Georgia.
Uh, yes, uh, and so, uh, this was, uh, brought to us as a possibility last year, but due to, uh, how far in the budget process we had gone, um, we decided to hold it off till this year. Uh, essentially, uh, the extension is set up as a hybrid, uh, agency where some of their employees are paid, um, uh, exclusively by U G A, um, some are paid exclusively by the county, and some are paid, um, by both entities. Uh, and so this was an option that they, that they began offering recently, we think it, uh, we think it's probably to be a lot better, not just for us, but the employees as well, uh, where they all get exclusively paid by U G A, uh, and the county just enters into a contract, um, you know, based on those amounts, uh, on an annual basis. Um, so therefore, everybody's getting the same benefits, everybody's getting, um, uh, um, vacation days and everything.
And we don't really control the employment of these, uh, extension workers, do we?
Uh, some we do, um, because some of them are exclusively on our payroll, and so that's why it makes it confusing, um, and so.
Now we have, uh, three.
Here, come on up, you can go, you all can meet Blake.
Uh, Blake Carter, I'm the new county extension coordinator. Um, right now, we have three positions that are county funded, and we have three positions that are U G A hybrid positions. So moving this, it would be all under one umbrella, just kind of simply put.
For the three, the county funds, I mean, I guess you technically have authority over them, but we probably don't even exercise that authority, I mean, you, you hire and fire.
Well, but they, but they fall under the county policies, uh, which may be different than their policies, like vacation days, uh, that sort of thing, so, um, this just makes it easier.
Okay. Is there anything legally, Lee, that we just need to consider, that when, when people are known as employees sort of of the county, they're working in our buildings and our offices and all? Is there any kind of thing we need with the extension, or is that, we're okay?
Could I cut in for once a second, Mr. Russell? Uh, we are technically still going to be county employees, we would just be, like, our paycheck will be cut from U G A.
My question, because you said that currently in our policy, I didn't know that would really change under, because if they're technically employees and we just let them pay them. See, that's what's confusing to me, I mean.
But.
You got harassment and all the policies.
Fall under the U G A personnel policy? Um, so, I mean, they are, I mean, their benefits are going to be paid for out of, uh, from U G A. Um, their vacation schedule is going to be, um, or, I'm sorry, holiday schedule.
Benefits, I'll give you an example, say there's a harassment issue, so, somebody says he harassed them, what do they do, they go to?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Or they go to IR.
Who, who do they go to? I mean, actually, that's a good question.
U G A, yes.
Okay.
So, my policies don't affect them at all?
We would have bought by.
Our Facebook policies don't affect them, nothing affects them, we just pay the contractor.
That's right.
Yeah, exactly.
Any, any issues?
I, I don't see any issues.
Okay.
It's gonna be similar to environmental health.
Right.
Yeah, I just want to make sure it's a change and that, we have some liability here, but just lost control of taking care of our liability. But if we don't, I'm fine, attorney says we don't, it's, it's good, okay? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I was the only one confused, probably. All right, do you have a motion to, uh, approve alternative one?
Make a motion to approve alternative one, second.
Motion by Mr. Kiefer, second by Mr. Deloach to approve alternative one, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. My attorneys always tell us about liability, so I'm always thinking about it.
Yeah.
You gotta be thinking about it now.
Yeah, no, that was a good question.
All right, item number sixteen, consideration to approve resolution twenty-two dash oh twenty-six to impose a moratorium, a morator- moratorium on R three and R six zoning districts until August sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Yes, sir, uh, so, um, this is, I know we've, uh, we've discussed at, uh, at past meetings, and particularly, uh, one of the more recent gross, meet, growth meetings that we had. Um, this is written very similar, uh, to the last moratorium that we had. Um, effectively, it is a ninety-day moratorium. Um, this will be, uh, related to rezonings of, um, anything that wants to rezone to R three, which is our multifamily, and R six, which is our high-density single family. Uh, and the, uh, purpose of this, uh, is so, um, we can sit down and come up with, if any, uh, changes to our ordinances, um, to aggress, to address, um, this recent trend of single-family neighborhoods, uh, becoming, um, exclusive single-family rental neighborhoods. Uh, and, um, what effect that may have, um, and it, um, and simply to start the discussion with the board members, uh, to see if we, um, if there's a desire to address that in an ordinance or not. Um, there may not be, um, but, um, uh, there are things that certain counties are doing, uh, and so we, um, uh, we wanted to, uh, kind of take the pressure off, uh, while we look to address them.
And our comprehensive plan that we're, we're working on, it won't be ready by August sixteenth, but might have more information out of that process that would help us with this maybe, because I know there's a lot of things.
Oh, the zoning, the, the zoning, uh, rewrite slash comprehensive plan?
Yeah, because in, in the, uh, way it's written up.
Yeah.
It says we're going through, we, we're looking at our land use with comprehensive and zoning. So is there going to be some additional information by August sixteenth, is that enough time to have sufficient information to address not just that, but other things we want to address?
Well, what we did, um, uh, on, when we did the previous, uh, moratorium on this, um, we basically, uh, not on this issue, but on the R six and R three, uh, zoning. Uh, um, we took those out of order, uh, and so we asked the consultant, uh, to address the R six, R three, and B, um, uh, mixed-use, uh, multifamily zoning, uh, are changes that we wanted there, um, so we did not have to wait to the very end.
So we can prioritize that in our comprehensive planning, so they can go ahead and finish that work, because we need that to make the decision.
And, and so I think we would do the same thing here, uh, we'd ask them just to take this out of order, um, uh, take a look in, at this, look at there's some other, um, ordinance that are in existence, and determine whether we want to recommend any changes to the board.
All right, I think someone wants to speak to this, uh, item?
I feel like I'm entering the portal here.
You are.
Uh, Mike Vac, we're representing the, uh, Home Builders Association of Greater Savannah. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman and, and members, and thank you to County Manager. Uh, he sent a letter to you yesterday, I believe all of you have re- received it, and what we are asking is that instead of moving forward with a ninety-day moratorium on rezoning properties to R three or R six, that you really narrow the focus of what you're going to be looking at, as evidenced by the county, county administrators', uh, transmittal, where you actually are looking at, at least as we understand, uh, single-family built-to-rent subdivisions. That is a very rapidly moving, uh, product that has been around for years, but it's just emerging in Georgia. Uh, I do know that there are at least two counties who have, uh, taken the initiative to look at, at this S F B R, or I get confused with the nomenclature on it, but basically, uh, built-to-rent subdivisions. Clayton County has outright decided that they are not going to allow, uh, that particular type of use. Cherokee County has decided that they are creating a specific land use which would be built to rent, single-family, within a certain subdivision. We're not sure if that fits as a use within their R three or R six or whatever, or it would be a separate use that would have its own zoning district nomenclature. So what we're asking is that, basically, instead of placing a moratorium on rezonings for R three and Rs, two R three and R six, on a total blanket basis, uh, that you look at having the consultant study this single-family built-to-rent, uh, phenomenon that we're seeing now, and determine with their recommendations and your consideration, uh, if that's something that the commissioners want to allow, promote, or see in Effingham County, either, either as a use or as an approved land development concept within R three or, or R six, without actually going to the extent of a moratorium. Uh, as you're all aware, Hyundai on Friday, uh, will be having a joint announcement, uh, in Seoul, Korea, and somewhere in Bryan County, uh, that they will be building a eight-billion-dollar Hyundai plant, uh, that will employ eight thousand individuals. Uh, that is going to have a profound ripple effect, uh, on land development. You have eight thousand jobs. We can't presume that this is going to be all eight thousand new people coming in, but let's just say conservatively, they're probably going to be, there's going to be a need for four thousand new residences. And a lot of those could be in sections of Effingham County, uh, where you would like to see some development, where the residents would like to see some development, from what we heard, from what you heard, uh, at one of the workshops a, a few weeks ago. So we would lay that before you, that would be our request. Uh, obviously, if you move forward with moratorium, we certainly will comply with it, uh, as we always have. We don't like moratoria, uh, but in many instances, it is a fact of life. So you have our request, uh, and, uh, I'll answer any questions that any of you would have.
Appreciate it, I think, uh, the things you highlighted, the options is what we want to be looking at, and I'm going to let, Lee, Lee, if you don't mind speaking this for our board, the concern would be while we're considering if we have it or don't have it, or how we do it, where in the land use plan. Currently, the zoning, if we were to approve R three or R six, I don't know that we could restrict it without this moratorium till we get that resolved, is that correct?
I would agree with that, I mean, there are many moving parts with it, and I think that would be very burdensome on staff to try to figure out if this was one that's going to comply, that's going to be non-rental, or what the intention's going to be, and for, you know, ninety days, I think this is.
Yeah, and I don't think ninety days is going to impact what's going to happen, because we got some fifty-seven hundred. Yeah, and I don't think ninety days is gonna impact what's gonna happen, because we got some fifty-seven hundred per, possible permits on our books right now.
What's concerning to me is the, at ACCG conference, I mean, the, the Atlanta Commissioners, um, I hea- I hear what you're saying, and I think we kind of have, or possibly have the same goal here, but what's concerning to me is, what the Commissioners told me is, when these folks come to the zoning, they have the regular zoning, well then they've already got the national buyer lined up, so it, it goes through a cycle, and then what do you do?
Happened.
Yeah.
At one time in the county.
Yeah.
Well, that was in the city, city limits with, with, with Guyton, but, um, so that's my thing, is I, I think we may need to try to find another, add another piece to it, to where it, it stops, you know, the single-family home, you know, rental units, but I'm just concerned that if we don't put the right language in there, I mean, somebody's gonna pick it apart, and they're gonna be able to get around it.
So I think the ninety days, uh, of all this concentration that you shared with us tonight, I don't think it's gonna impact that, because we're talking about ninety days to make sure we can do things appropriately going forward to protect our community. All the things it says in the resolution, the aesthetics of this community, things we appreciate, we want to make sure we're there, and still allow property owners to, to use their property to the highest value.
We've, we've.
The only thing coming before us are these high-density. Nobody's looking to build a Silverwood, a lost plantation, and that's the problem.
Well, you have a.
Not gonna see that. That's a thing of the past, for the most part.
Yeah. Realistically, the prices have risen to the point where you're seeing things such as these single-family built-to-rent, uh, developments pop up because you have individuals, families who want a single-family lifestyle, uh, but quite frankly, are not able to enter the market at a, at a, at an affordable price point. And affordable price points now are north of two-hundred thousand dollars. So this, this fits a need and a niche in terms of housing, uh, but it is a decision that, uh, boards of commissions, uh, mayors and aldermen across the state are having to, having to come to grips with. Uh, this is something we've seen in North Carolina. It's been very successful in South Carolina, and it's coming down the coast.
I, I know some of these larger neighborhoods like Silverwoods or things of the past, but I think there is still mixed use. We have to determine with our community what we want to look like.
Yeah.
And because right now, I personally would not just want to see a bunch of multifamily and high-density without the mixed use of the multifamily with the density, and then the larger lots with the houses, so that's a, it creates a aesthetic value for our community that, that we've appreciated for years.
Well, and it may be at the end of the day, this is a part of that mix.
Right. Oh, I, I see it's part of mix, but I think we gotta get our heads around for the next ninety days with our comprehensive plan, land use, where the multifamily, high-density, where would that be, and should it be more in a mixed-type environment than just, and I'll just use, um, Poole, when I see they're going up constantly. I don't know if that's what we want in Effingham.
Well, as normal.
I've seen some nice neighborhoods where they have the multifamily, and then they have the smaller lots with the really nice houses, and then you have the larger houses and the lots.
Another phase.
In another phase. It's a mixed use. And at the same time, as a county, we want to make sure we have strictly some affordable housing for, we represent all our constituents who need that two-hundred thousand dollar unit to have a single-family dwelling.
Right.
So we gotta look at all that, and I think that's what we need ninety days to see how that's gonna.
Well, appreciate you giving me that.
Even for myself, I'm, I'm not opposed to the, the idea of it. I'm saying we've got one in, in my district, actually. But there are a lot of things we gotta consider. How, how do we police this? How do we manage this? You know, if we do create a zone like that.
And I'm hoping.
A lot of things to figure out in thirty days.
Ninety days.
Ninety days, sorry.
And I'm hoping that's what we can figure out. I'm hoping they'll go to work on that and use some of these, I think you had one from Cherokee or someplace, use some of these places that have already dealt with it earlier, and give Lee time to review it, and maybe we can put something together. It may need to be tweaked.
Well, and it may be at the end of the day that it's, it's not necessarily that much different than a multifamily housing development. The only difference is you don't have multifamily, three-story, four-story buildings in there. You have single-family residences in there that are all rental. So, as usual.
Blend of the two.
Yes, as usual, uh, we appreciate your time. Uh, we will continue to work with you and provide input where we can, and, uh, appreciate, appreciate what you're doing, and I, I love seeing what's going on in Effingham County. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Any other?
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if this makes any difference, but we talk about ninety days over here, and the actual, uh, resolution is for, for four months.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, he, he, he is correct. I do have a list. We, um, in the process of doing this, we took the previous moratorium, and we tried to plug in information in there, uh, and, uh, just because of the timing of it, uh, and there were, there's a list of, uh, changes that I just need to make on that. That is one of them. Uh, that's the first one.
All right, go ahead and go through the changes that you want to make on the moratorium.
First up on the, on the title, uh, to change four months to ninety days, uh, remove, um, the word "commercial", and, uh, anywhere where it says R-dash-six multifamily, replace that with R-dash-three multifamily. And lastly, is just simply at the date, uh, at the end, um, change it to, uh, the, uh, May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two.
I do have a question. When will our retreat be? I would love for this to encompass the retreat where we could really get some work done, get data before that meeting, and put, put some serious hours into this, because this, this, this is a big deal. And it, it reverts back to, and I'm, I sound like a broke record, you know, with, with the safety issues I've got in my district. You know, this is an opportunity for us to say, hold on, let's, let's figure something out that will work, oh, not only for the safety issue that we're having and the infrastructure being behind, but also the multifamily and, I mean, not the multifamily, but, but the, the issue with, uh, these neighborhoods becoming all rental. So, I, I'd just like it to be enough time where we could really go to work and, and come up with something that everybody's happy with, that it both protect our residents and will protect this county from becoming something we don't want it to.
Well, I can work with Stephanie. It's all about everybody's calendar.
That's all this, that's.
That's why we're seeing so much of this, you know.
Right.
And Forrest is right. We, you know, there's a place for it, but everything we're seeing now is R six.
Townhomes.
Townhomes are.
School, school starts August third, is that right? I heard somebody say earlier.
So, you know, I would say do the four months and give us time to, to really have the retreat. Let's put some real serious work into this. Let's get our data and do it right. That's my thoughts.
Well, if, if we could meet, I guess first I was gonna try to determine if we could have the workshop, because I agree, we, we need the workshop. This is gonna be more than just an hour discussion at a board meeting. We don't want to go that long with all that we have anyway in a board meeting. So if you include it as part of a workshop, and school's back in August third.
Yes, sir.
So this, August sixteenth, we meet, if we wanted to try to do it before school, is that better for everybody? Those with.
Be hard to do before school.
Is it better to do it while it's in the summer, at the end of July? Or is it better to do it in August when they're all back in school?
I think for me, better to do it. For people with kids, for me, it is better to do it when they're in school.
Is there a chamber retreat this year?
In school.
Yeah, I got a lot of.
That'll be at the tail end.
When is the chamber retreat?
They've asked in the contract to remove that, because they didn't get enough people to go.
We just need to have a workshop, maybe.
Yeah, if, if nothing else, it's here to do a retreat. We need some developers on board, and, you know, I've seen, told us some developers have some great ideas on the safety issues and this kind of stuff, so, you know, we, they're, they're sensitive to the issue. They're sensitive to, to the people that are having, great, and I'm, so I welcome the, the comments.
Well, there's two things, a workshop, and we need a retreat too, because we got a lot that we need to talk about and work on. Workshop's easy. We can schedule that before one Saturday.
If that's better, I'm fine with that, but I just know.
One Friday.
We've got a couple of days instead of a couple of hours that we.
Want a workshop or retreat?
I would prefer a retreat and after school's out. That would be my preference, but it, that may be the.
After school is out or in?
Or back in, back in. That way, because I've got vacations planned and trying to connect with my kids, because I'm just.
Is that easier for you guys if the kids are in school? If you do it locally, I guess it's better, isn't it? If you go away, it's better if it's in the summer.
I mean, it doesn't matter to me, but I mean, out, when the kids are back in, I mean, it's, I agree with Roger.
Okay. Probably need to do it maybe locally then, if it's, the kids are in school. It's hard to get away and.
Well, if they're in school, I can get away. But I'd, you know, they have so much.
Yeah, my wife wouldn't be real happy burning a weekend when she's off for two months, because I mean, it goes by pretty quick.
It does, and we have very little.
Typically, she's got things planned out every weekend.
Would you want to get away from Effingham? Sometimes we get pulled by our businesses if we're in Effingham. I've noticed that when we are, say, at St. Simon's or someplace, we don't leave.
That doesn't really matter to me. I mean, but I, I agree with Roger on the timing. I mean, it, it would, just the timing would be better, but whether we do it here or go somewhere, I mean, that doesn't.
It would matter to you.
Because we individually commit to.
That doesn't matter.
So, the workshop.
Let's look for, uh, October, September. I'm sorry, that's October?
August.
August, September, and August would be the better date, probably.
Yeah, because schools, it seems like it starts earlier every year.
Yeah.
So, you know, you did it mid-August, and then we had a retreat. Be on board for that.
So you're saying to have a workshop to discuss this moratorium, the change to the ordinance?
We're trying, we're trying to pick a time to do a retreat and can include this in that discussion during our retreat.
It'll be way late.
Yeah, that, that's, yeah, the moratorium's gone.
Four months opportunity. Can we do four months?
Three months.
Three months.
Well, this thing reads four, doesn't it?
Yeah, he just said change that.
It's ninety days. I mean, I'd recommend having a workshop just to address what we're discussing tonight. Because that's gonna take, I mean, a couple of public hearings to have the ordinance changed when we get to that point. So, I mean.
I'd say we do it like the, um.
Just do it before a meeting?
I like the, uh, well, I, I really like what we did with the growth workshop. We had it on non-meeting day. So then, it, it seemed like it was more focused on, on that topic.
And more people could show, more people could show up too. We did it at six o'clock.
All right, well, let's, we need some time to get this information to the folks.
The better, because they're gonna need the information from us to get to the consultant, feedback, to start working on it.
I thought we were waiting for the consultant to give us some information.
Well, we can, that's, that's right. There's two ways to do it, and so what might be.
Chicken or the egg?
A better process, uh, is to come up with some examples, uh, and see, uh, and see what, you, you know, how your responses are to them, uh, and then tweak the examples versus trying to do something from scratch. Uh, and so we can, um, as staff, um, you know, try and take the information that we receive at these meetings, uh, come up with, with something and then throw it out there as a balloon, and if you, you want to change it, we change it. Uh, but we'll, we can do that as part of a process. It has to go through two readings anyway, uh, so we can amend it, uh, prior to the second reading if there's a tremendous amount of feedback at the first reading. Uh, but I would suggest probably doing a discussion at one meeting, then a first reading of, a discussion of what we proposed at one meeting, then a first reading at the next meeting. So I'm talking three meetings.
All right, to, to James.
That, that would, but three meetings would get us into the end of July, which I think would be fine.
Commissioner Loach's, uh, point, though, he was suggesting we don't do it on a meeting night, because particularly our, our first meeting's a long. Maybe we do it on a Thursday.
Okay.
And do what you just said, have that first input information, um, with the examples that we build, some kind of template.
Sure.
And then you go back and work on that with our consultants and bring it to a first reading, which will be our next meeting after that. So this is May, June. Do you need a couple of, we need to do it pretty fast. Do we need to do it in June?
Yeah, we can do it in June.
So if you do it in June, can I offer, um, the sixteenth, which is a Thursday, it's an off-meeting week? It's the weekend between.
I'm gonna check my calendar right quick.
Sixteenth? I can do that. Like somebody, I think somebody mentioned before, you know, we, other counties, and I, I think you mentioned it as well, have already been through this. Let's look at what they did, how they handle it, the results, if they've got any, and, you know, instead of trying to reinvent the wheel from scratch.
Can we not do it the twenty-third, the, the week of a regular meeting? I try to be here the weeks of our meetings, and that week, um, and I like to.
Yeah, there's a week off. I want to take a week off.
I'd rather not have a meeting. Is that, is it okay if we do it the same week of a meeting?
But on like a Thursday?
The Thursday, the twenty-third, because I will be in town that week for sure, because it's a regular meeting.
I'm okay with that.
Particularly in the summer, there's weeks that we have available, one of, I'll be somewhere with our families and vacationing and stuff. So the twenty-third, we'll look at a workshop, and then that'll give us the, uh, still a couple of months to put something together for the August sixteenth deadline. Okay?
Okay.
Is it on my June, June, or May? What are we talking about?
June.
June, okay.
June, the twenty-third.
Yeah, we have, we have a meeting on the twenty-first, so we, if you're planning on being in town that week, then the twenty-third would should work. It's kind of like we did on our workshop the last time on growth.
So around the same time as before, six o'clock?
Yeah, I think that worked great. I mean, it gets people, people that want to show up.
Twenty-four.
Yep, six o'clock on the twenty, on the twenty-third.
What?
June twenty-third.
Isn't that Thursday?
That's Thursday.
It's a Thursday.
What time?
Six o'clock. Make where the public can come to it and be a part of if they want to, some of the home builders.
Okay, that sounds good.
I've gotten some really good ideas from home builders and developers.
Between now and then, we might even want to look at, um, addressing more than just that one item if we have time. It may be.
Yeah, we'll have to continue on our discussions on the growth and the density.
Yeah. So might use that opportunity. If we're gonna come back together from six to seven, might, or from six to eight, or six to nine, and get some work done.
And I, I was just going to offer that, on behalf of the home builders, we'll work very closely with your staff and see what we can provide as well, not only from a state, uh, perspective, but also from the national perspective as well, because I know NAHB has significant resources for this, and I'll be with the state's legislative director tomorrow. So we'll tee this up so that we can work kind of hand in glove with this process moving forward.
Thank you, sir. That'd be great. All right. Stephanie, did you get all the noted changes or corrections? All right, so I'm going to ask for a motion, um, to approve the moratorium, which is alternative one, with the corrections as stated by our county manager, and so noted by our clerk. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Burdette, second by Mr. Deloach. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Item number seventeen, consideration to approve to council the July, uh, fifth, twenty-twenty-two Board of Commissioners meeting. And, and I'm okay with that as long as we realize we may need a special call meeting to handle some business.
Yeah, I'm gonna be out of town that week, so.
Give you that week to be with your family, whatever you want to do, but we may need a special call meeting, because we got lots going on. Any, any pause or questions from me and the board, or do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to cancel the, uh, July fifth, twenty-twenty-two meeting.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Deloach, second by Mr. Burdette, to council the July fifth, twenty-twenty-two meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. All right, that concludes our regular business, and we'll move to our.
We're gonna circle back, weren't we?
Yeah.
Did we, Mr. Rogers?
Didn't we table?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you so much. I saw him came in, made a mental note, then my mind went blank. Thank you, Mr. Kiefer. All right, this is, this was item number.
Two, I think.
Two.
Yeah.
All right. Did you have a discussion with them?
Yeah, and I ju, I think, uh, just, you know, going off the suggestion to table this to the June meeting, can I get a statement for the record at why? Because I think we're doing everything by right to subdivide the property.
I think for the safety of those children, it would be a good idea to put a berm there. It's clearly on safety and nothing else, since we're dealing with a school and not dealing with a home.
And I might add this, and if it's by right, we, we're not gonna challenge it. But I'm not sure that it is until our attorney looks at it and says, because I know it, it speaks to residential and commercial. I don't know that it speaks to institutions like a school. So if it's by right, we may not, can do anything. But if we can, then we need to ask for something.
And I'll be honest, just, I mean, just my personal opinion, and, I, I mean, it just is what it is, but I, I'm just shocked that y'all didn't already offer up the berm, being that it is a school.
Me too.
I mean, I'm just being honest. I just felt that with. I just felt that with the school, everything that's been talked about, I just really felt that, you know, y'all probably went a little bit farther than what was required, but that's, that's just my opinion.
And I'm total agreement of that. I'm surprised.
I would echo that as well.
I'm surprised it's even an issue. Yeah, I would be like, sure, we'll do that.
And, and I, I understand fr- from your side, the business side, yes, okay, y- you are looking at what we're requiring, but it's a school, and hopefully we're not gonna have this kinda situation pop up anymore, but, so it is, I think, pretty isolated situation.
I do have another question not related. When are you gonna fix the railroad track?
Uh, I will, I, I can, I'll talk with them, yeah, at the crossing.
Yeah, that's horrible. I mean, it's absolutely disastrously horrible. We got tracks on.
I actually get calls on that too.
We got tracks on twenty-one that you can go across at fifty-five, you won't even know you're going to cross them. Now, you go across at five and it chokes your teeth out.
Okay.
Now, I was thinking by now, somebody would've come to us and say, hey, we got that covered, we're gonna handle it, but I really would like to have that answered.
Okay.
My wife wants that answer. Okay.
So table to the next meeting, you're happy with that?
We've already got it. It's already, that's already motioned.
It's already been done, yeah.
Alright, so we weren't gonna.
So I, I want to remove and table to vote, since, since he said it's okay to table, he just wanted on record why. And we're seeing, cause.
Yeah, and then we can get together and discuss further.
I feel like you should offer that, and we wanna make sure that it is by right. Not sure it is by right yet.
Okay.
Okay?
Alright, very good, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alright. That concludes our business, we'll go.
Did we make a motion on that?
We already did.
We already did.
We, I didn't take it off the table.
Okay.
We already tabled.
He's with cash.
Oh, cause we were going possibly taking all.
Right, correct. So we'll move to our reports from our commission and administrative staff. We'll start with administrative staff, do you have a fourth?
Yeah, I'll just say, uh, real quick, um, we've been, uh, actively, uh, and the chairman has been, uh, involved on, uh, issues that we've discussed, water and sewer. We had our third, uh, joint meeting, uh, just to go over with, uh, with progress. Uh, and I will say we are making a tremendous amount of progress, um, and, uh, we had a, um, staff tour, EOM tour of, uh, Oglethor power today. Um, that's moving forward aggressively, uh, and, um, as are, um, all permits, uh, particularly with, um, uh, with the spray fields, uh, which is our, uh, our immediate request, and, they're not here yet, but OmniTrax has been, uh, uh, has been great, uh, to work with on that issue as well, uh, providing some assistance. We also, um, have meetings, discussions with, uh, with the JDA, and we have a meeting in Bryan County tomorrow. Uh, Commissioner DeLoach will be there, and we will, um, provide, uh, an update, um, uh, tomorrow evening, uh, via email. If you all didn't get this email, can you, um, just de- deactivate?
Deactivate.
Okay, you're done. Alright, um, that, just if you didn't get this email, these were, um, uh, two of the options with regards to the, uh, welcome sign on twenty-one. Um, the other options were these, but, um, a little bit larger, uh, as well, and I can show those to you. Uh, but if you, I just wanted, if you didn't get this email, just, uh, you know, let me know what you think, shoot me an email, uh, and, um, we can, uh, get an idea on pricing.
Do we have a tagline for the, for the county?
Well, uh, Sarah, our, um.
She laughs.
Our interim HR director will be making a presentation, uh, at the next meeting, uh, for something that her leadership Effingham cla, class has worked on. And, uh, I don't know whether it would be on the sign, but it is, uh, something they've, they've, idea-wise, they've come up with, and come up with a video that could be a good starting point at least.
Hopefully it's not Effingham County land of warehousing and high-density residential areas.
Uh, and that's all I got.
That's the first one, but I think somebody would, it'd be easily, easily vandalized with the welcome to up top.
Re-insure it.
Sir.
It's insured.
Yeah, but who else to keep replacing it? And, and why I know that is the development I live in, we finally gave up and just put some solid steel letters and just put three of them, and quit putting the, the thing up.
I was looking at this, the one on the right, it's all pretty, that would be pretty hard to tear up.
Yeah, that would be, it's not as pretty, but a whole lot more durable.
Alright, we just make your, make your thoughts known to, to our county manager. It'd be great. Alrighty, uh, anything else, Mr. Tim? Anything from staff over there?
Yes, sir.
That one, okay.
Um, just a couple of things. You have your monthly report from EOM for last month, April. We have scheduled for your ribbon cutting for the McCall Park for June tenth, at ten a.m. I think you all said last meeting that you were comfortable with June tenth.
What is that?
The ribbon cutting for McCall Park?
Oh, yeah, okay.
We're not gonna do any, like, lunch, hot dogs, or anything like that.
Thinking about it.
I'll flip some burgers for people.
I think, I was thinking about that.
Glad to.
Okay.
It's a Friday.
Um, and you were discussing a retreat, so I was looking at dates. So we have five Tuesdays in August as well, so I was looking at August twenty-sixth, which is a Friday, through August the twenty-eighth, so Friday to Sunday.
Meeting itself, or, alright, uh.
That's around the same time we usually do it.
That's right.
Yeah, that last, yeah.
What's the dates?
August twenty-sixth through the twenty-eighth.
Friday, Saturday, and Sunday?
Mm-hmm.
If we did it on Sunday, we would start after church. Are we gonna do it?
We can. We can, if that's the way you wanna do it.
If we're gonna do it locally, I'd like to do that. If we're not gonna do it locally, I'm good with, we're gonna go somewhere.
St. Simon's sounds good.
Well, if we're gonna go somewhere, we can have a devotion that morning.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
What weekend?
Twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, and twenty-eighth.
Of what?
Getting out of town and focusing. I'd get pulled from work and everything else here.
Can you send us an email with all these dates?
I will. It'll be on your calendar.
Let's do that. And then, uh, just a thought, consider coming in Thursday evening, so you hit the ground running on Friday morning.
Okay.
I think, if you come in and share a meal together, and then, uh, Tim, you know, where the agenda's gonna be, we can review where we're gonna be going Friday and Saturday. That helps us not really just get started Friday by lunch, by the time we go through all the introductions of the business at hand. There may be some things we wanna prioritize at that time, but you can look back, and I'd use Thursday evening for maybe an hour or so to, to hit the ground running at nine o'clock Friday morning. Yeah.
But my, my thought on these, um, and since we're either wrapping up or, um, have wrapped up our master plans, is to set the a- agenda around, um, kinda reviewing, uh, an overview of the master plans and kinda how to, uh, what we wanna tackle next on them. Uh, and potentially any updates you wanna make to them, although most of them are new, so, uh, there probably won't be any of that, uh, in the early years.
Yeah, and I think that helps us too, cause we also need time just to kinda a little bit envision what's happening and where we're going as well, you know? Not just listing things we wanna address as the issues, but, you know, like, what does Mr. Lo perceive for our county that we haven't discussed, that we wanna talk, that sets the future agendas, you know, sure about, what is, Mr. Kiefer see, and so forth. Envisioning's gonna be important, I think, particularly all the growth. Alright. So we got some dates that you can work on for us?
Yes, sir.
Alright. We'll go, start with Mr. Floyd to go around the room.
Uh, last month, we approved that development over on Zitryer, and concerns from the community was flooding and water getting across Zitryer Road, and I think I'd mentioned to Tim, I mentioned Eric. I know you said you didn't shoot any grades, but is any s- things scheduled to work on the ditching and our easement over there, or what? I'm having follow-up calls, you know, what's our plan before that development wraps around to, to address the concerns that's there now?
I can, I'll call EOM tomorrow and see if I can't get a schedule on them. I have not gotten a schedule from them yet on that work.
Okay, yeah, just shoot me an email. I just wanna be able to communicate with those folks over there.
They have reviewed it, but they, they know what has to be done, but they just don't have a schedule on, on what's gonna be done.
That's it.
For me, I, I'd like to revisit having our own communications person on staff, and we've talked about that in, in different genres, but there's a huge need for it to get the, the information out to the public, videos out, educational type stuff, where people could actually see what we're trying to accomplish, see some of the same things we do. Not everybody can be here for meetings, and, uh, just really be that liaison to the public. We could have a lot of fun with it in a lot of different ways, you know, using every medium that we can with social media and traditional still, cause some people still read the paper. Although we should cut out anything, but I think it's a great need of, of adding on, um, and the other commissioners, Commissioner DeLoach had mentioned this in the past, in different ways, that we just, we just, we don't communicate enough with everybody. You know, I think it would be worth every penny to have somebody that just did that. You know, I have a lot of ideas of ways they could do that, that would be interesting and fun and engaging, but the first step is, you know, can we budget a little money and get somebody that would do that, you know, full-time and get the word out? And then, then people know what we're talking about, and they're not behind the eight ball. They, they know if we're discussing, uh, anything, that, you know, here's the process. This is why we're even talking about it, because here's the educational part of it that they might have not got to see, that we're privy to.
They can talk to Tim Hutchings for us.
Yeah, I, I would support that. I would hope the board would, because I, I think with all that Tim has to manage in our projects and using our project folks to help manage that, we always demand communication from our county manager, but when does he have time to communicate, you know? And, and this would give that person that he can say, this is what I need to communicate, this is what I need to get out, give me a presentation, I want it by Friday, show me what you got, you know, that he can send out to. I think it just strengthens his responsibility to communicate with our constituents better.
And then less surprises for our constituents. You know, instead of this happening the week before our meeting, they know a mu, a month or two ahead when we're, when it's being talked about. And you need to get this, you get the word out about it, so.
An example is the current thing we're talking about, R-three and R-six. If you could go for the public now and say, this is why we're doing what we're doing, we're looking at it, this is, you know, it just.
Yeah, educational.
It would be great. So I, I, we can support that as a board, and, and maybe if you hadn't finished the budget, maybe that's something you wanna just propose, if it's not already there.
Maybe some equipment that they would need, or.
Is, but, rest of the board, any, any opposition to following up with that?
I think we're at that point. I think we've been at, been to that point, um, somebody to, to lead that.
There's other tools we can use as well. We'll bring them up tonight for the sake of time, but some stuff I learned at the ACCG conference, you know, other tools we can use as a county to get feedback from the public as well. There's apps you can use, there's all kind of communication thing, tools.
I can't say, cause I know this, I've, I've been hesitating to comment, but the, um, this has, uh, come up recently, had put it, uh, put it on the agenda, and, um, it wasn't approved. However, there is one change that has occurred, uh, and that's the PIO in the, uh, sheriff's office is no longer at the sheriff's office. Uh, and so, um, you know, there was discussion of, of utilizing them, but, you know, that's not an option anymore. Um, so, um, if it's something that the board wants to pursue, uh, I can put it in as part of the budget, a position in there, uh, to budget for as part of the budget. Uh, and then, uh, we can review it during the budget process, so, um.
Why don't we do that? That gives the board a chance to speak to it, come up with a proposal.
Okay.
A cost, and then we can address it and pull it out if we don't wanna do it, or change it or whatever.
And, and while I'm, okay, I, I don't wanna move on to the next topic, but I did forget something, so go ahead.
Okay. Um, I'll come back to myself.
Yeah, I've got two things. Um, first one, don't throw anything at me, but, um, been talking to, um, a couple of engineers, um, that do work here in the county, and I also have had a couple of conversations last couple of days with my appointment on the planning board, and it's come up that one of the, I, I guess, kind of hot topics, hot areas is our buffer ordinances, and kinda how our buffer ordinances, um, and different zonings are different. And, you know, I thought back on the growth workshop that we had, I think some of the concerns from the constituents had to do with buffers. And I think it would be beneficial, I'm not saying this is code red, but at some point, have a buffer workshop, and invite some of the engineers that typically, I mean, we, we deal with and, and see, and I think that could be, uh, beneficial for us.
And I've got a heated one coming up soon, and D-two, that would love some guy that's on.
Yeah. Um, so just wanted to throw that out there, and the second thing is, I, I know, I guess it's not quite as big a deal in all the districts, but I know in my district and in Forest District around Meldrum, um, we've got some serious dead spots, um, with internet service. And broadband is an issue, and I know planners really wants to come in, but I don't think legally they can. And I didn't really pay attention to this till after, um, the shelter in place, when Jeff Laracy with the Board of Education, with their IT department, contacted me. And there were quite a few kids in the Clio area and Meldrum area that could not keep up with schoolwork, just because they just flat out did not have internet access. And I was actually talking with a grandmother earlier this afternoon that says that she, sometimes she has to drive her grandkids up to Springfield, so her grandkids can have internet access on their laptop. And as y'all know, I mean, that, that's extremely inconvenient. I'm sure that, that this is not a cheap fix, but as we always say, I mean, if we don't start talking about it at some point, it's, it's not gonna get on the list, it won't get done. Um, Tim, I know I've talked to you, I, I don't know legally if there's anything we can do to try to help planners, or, and not just saying planners, but somebody else.
If service isn't being provided, I would think whoever has that territory should.
Well, this is something, I actually talked to, uh, Mr. John Burns in Atlanta, and this is gonna have to, I guess, come down from the top, but the way it is right now, the service provider determines the service area. So if Windstream gets asked, hey, can you cover Meldrum or you cover Clio, they say yes, and that's the way it is. But technically, the infrastructure's not there. I know, especially around the folks with Tuxie King, I get calls from them all the time, but.
And, and I can add, uh, a little of that, and, and if you were, um, planners had this, and, um, I'm trying to get a, a copy of the layer for our GIS, it actually will map out where, um, broadband, uh, technical broadband speeds are, not, and that blocks out a lot of really slow DSL, they don't consider that broadband. Uh, and if you were to look at our county, um, you will see that in the northwest corner, um, uh, north of Ebenezer, um, west of twenty-one, uh, is a, um, there's, it, you'll just see there's practically nothing there. The whole county's lit up with a little, exception of a little pocket down by, uh, Meldrum, uh, and then there's barely anything up there. Uh, and you are correct, it's because the designated service area, uh, for there is Windstream. Uh, and so we attempted to get a, um, a grant from the state. We applied for a grant with the ARPA funds. Uh, we didn't get it, partnered with, um, uh, planners on that. Um, and I think, you know, part of the reason why was, you know, wh- while we were willing, uh, the board had voted to commit some money to it, um, a lot of the other counties, uh, were a little bit more aggressive with their match, and quite frankly, the provider was a little more aggressive with the match. And so I think, um, for the next round of those funds, uh, which are available, uh, through the state, and also there's a big, uh, chunk of funds that are gonna be available as a result of a larger chunk of funds than ARPA that are gonna be available, uh, from the infrastructure bill. as a result of a larger chunk of funds than ARPA that are gonna be available, uh, from the infrastructure bill, um, that, you know, we just, uh, go out there to, I don't, it just determine, we don't care which provider it is, whoever can partner with the county that's gonna provide the most competitive package for a grant, um, you know, so be it, uh, to cover, uh, you know, essentially all the areas that aren't covered. It does require the county, uh, to do something that I know, um, you know, we're, we're hesitant to do, and that is to get into the broadband business temporarily. Uh, but in reality, um, some of these areas, uh, because they are rural, but not necessarily, um, fall into the category of low income, will be ineligible for a lot of other grants that other counties, um, like, uh, Jenkins and Scriven, uh, Bullock have been able to get. Uh, and so for these dollars that are coming up through ARPA and the infrastructure, we, we may have to jump on them. Essentially, we would, uh, the way that the, the grants work, we would essentially contract out the build-out. Uh, and once that's done, uh, we would, uh, and the contractors are paid, uh, we would then turn the assets over to a provider. Uh, and we could work out a deal with that provider for, you know, um, some sort of, uh, you know, discounted service or something to that effect. Uh, but that's how it would work. We'd essentially, we'd be responsible for the build-out, um, and then, uh, and then we would just turn it over to a private provider who we determined to be in advance, so.
Is that, are you saying that's how we can get around the service area that's been assigned to someone?
Yes.
We, we take, we take the service area as a county.
That's right.
Build it out, and then.
Yeah, so those, the service areas.
Then we can contract that service out to a provider like.
Preventing them, anybody from using the right of ways and entering in, right?
That's correct, but the, the way they provide, like, you know, in, in example, um, we do have an abundance of providers, we have multiple providers in areas, right? But that's because they're high density. Um, matter of fact, we've got, um, Hargray, um, uh, coming in, uh, to areas around Rincon. Um, but, um, but that is because they can hit a lot of homes in a short, in a short distance. When you get to these rural areas, you have to have grants in order to, um, in, in order to provide services to them. It's just, there's no way you will ever make your money back, um, on, on subscriptions, on subscriptions to the broadband. Uh, and the traditional grants funds, and I, it's an acronym, and I forget what it is, um, that are available, um, uh, are determined on service area. Uh, and so, uh, who has that service area? And so, um, uh, and I, and I don't wanna make this decision for them, but Windstream, you know, tr- is a, is a for-profit company. And so when they, uh, when they make those determination as to, we got these grant money, where are we going to put the, expand our network? They will have a tendency to put it in the areas, uh, they can get the higher bang for the buck. Um, uh, but with a lot more infrastructure money coming in, um, it, it may, uh, it makes some of these, uh, more rural marginal areas, um, uh, it makes, uh, sense to expand out to them as well, so, uh, that's a struggle.
But it sounded like the planners wants to come in, is that what you're understanding?
Mm-hmm.
And it's not an issue of density or whatever, the, it sounded like it was an issue that they couldn't come in because the area is, is Windstream's.
Well, they couldn't get the grants. They can't, they, they're not gonna come, they couldn't get the traditional grants.
Because it's not their service area.
That's right, and they're not gonna provide the service, and they, they can't provide the service, uh, without the grants, um, because of the distance between.
I got you.
Well, it was one citizen that had a conversation with them, um, today, and they made it seem like there was also a legal issue, but I don't, she might have been missing a point of grants or something, but made it seem like Windstream had that territory, so they couldn't come in that area of North Effingham, but.
Generally, they, I mean, as a general rule, they can, um, uh, but like I said, they just, uh.
Okay.
They just don't have the free money to do it.
Why, just wanted to bring that up, 'cause, I mean, there's some folks, got some serious issues, and, I mean, I didn't realize it, but until the Board of Education called me and talked to me about it.
Yeah, I think it's a great alternative. If there's a way we can take that service area and build it out through grants and partnering with somebody like planners or Windstream, whoever wants to partner with us to build it out. But by us servicing that area, not a private industry, we could get the grants you're saying.
That's correct. I mean, we would have to apply for the grants, um, not.
Let's check, let's look into that. That's, uh, maybe a great solution.
I'd do it. That's gonna be a hard sell for me, but. Listen, my mom lives in a rural area, and she has terrible service, but hey, it's where she lives, you know?
Yeah.
But I get it. It can be, when it, when it comes to the children, there are some situations.
Especially with COVID.
But there are ways they have mobile units that go, you know, to certain areas.
You can get satellite, can't you? Is that just not good service?
Um, and these grants, uh, and they very well may be available, the, uh, it was started by, uh, SpaceX, um, uh, I think it's called Starlink. Um, it's a Elon Musk company, but i- there's no requirement to run fiber optic to the home. Um, they have these, um, so they have been grabbing a lot of these grants in some of these service areas, uh, to, uh, to provide that as well, because the box unit is just really, really expensive. Uh, and so I'll, I'll have to see if, if, if they're gonna cover our area.
When you say grant, I'm thinking that we don't have to put a lot of our funds in that. It's gonna be a very small percentage, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Uh, our match is still small, but it's, but when you consider a fifteen million dollar build-out, um, you know, a, a three million dollar contribution from the county, or a combination of three million dollar contribution.
The personnel to manage such a thing, I mean.
Well, we would, um.
Well, we would turn it over to.
Yeah, well, once we, once we, um, issue the construction contract, um, you know, we, that kind of would manage itself, uh, and then we don't do anything with it. Um, we just basically, once it's built out, we hand it to the provider, uh, and, uh, and they run it, so.
Cause it's sounding like it might be cheaper, three million dollars, might be cheaper to buy a hotspot for everyone who lives in the rural area.
Yeah.
You know.
Run water and sewer lines with the same dish.
Jamie, on your topic earlier on buffers and variances, uh, I did meet with one of the developers about a month ago, and he had a, I thought was a really great idea, and, and his idea was to, you know, you normally when you'd step down the residential, you'd have a three-hundred-foot buffer. That doesn't do a lot if there's nothing there. You still see, and it's still a problem. Uh, his suggestion was, and I, I kinda like it, it, uh, for every fifty feet that we give you, you build a ten-foot berm. So if you build ten foot, you get that reduced to two-fifty. If you build twenty foot, you get that reduced to two-hundred. If you build the thirty foot with vegetation, you get down to one-fifty and you stop it there. I think that gives the homeowner probably more protection than just a, a buffer with space.
Right.
You know, you, cause you, thirty foot high, that's, then you've really got some protection from noise and pollution and sightless, you know, just throwing it out there. I thought it was a pretty, pretty cool idea.
Yeah.
Well, the natural vegetative buffers, you know, what is that?
Yeah, exactly. We, our, we don't really read it, read well enough to.
When the leaves are all gone, the pine needles fall.
Then, then you've got something with some substance, and you put something that's fast-growing on top of that, and you've got a nice buffer. And I, I think if I was a homeowner, I'd rather have that than a void of three hundred feet.
And that may be something that workshop, we had some discussion there. It's not gonna be a long discussion, it'd just be some input.
Yeah.
And, and that's been done before, um, where you give, um, credits for, for berms and buffers, uh, and, um, I think that's one of the discussions we had at the, uh, one of our first public meetings on the, um, uh, the comprehensive plan zoning change was a discussion of buffers. So we can, we can give, give you all some options, uh, to put in there.
Let's, let's think about adding that to that meeting, as time may permit.
Okay.
Where we're discussing the R-three, R-six, and then some buffers.
We definitely need to step down plan. We, we do, go ahead, cause it's, it's gonna happen more and more.
Absolutely, okay.
That's it.
Mr. Looper?
I'm good to go.
Kiefer?
Um, uh, I'm, uh, Ridgecrest, or Ridgecrest.
Did they pick them up Monday, yesterday?
I did not follow up with the EOM to see if they picked it up, but they were supposed to deliver, they were supposed to pick it up and, and set it. They were supposed to pick it up on Monday. Whether or not they set it yet today, I don't know.
I'll be, I'll get by, I'll just ride by and check. If they set it, I will probably get something, so I get it pretty regular.
Of course.
Are we, I got one other thing. Are we on, uh, the mowing schedule? Is it, I've had a couple of people inquire about cutting the grass along the road.
Yeah, and, um.
We're mowing this morning somewhere.
We, we did have a, a, a question on somebody that I, that we responded to a few weeks ago on the mowing schedule. Apparently, there's a winter mowing cycle, um, that was, uh, that was missed because of equipment failure. Uh, and they're trying to get everything caught up. I think they do, what was it, four mowings a year? Eric, do you remember? Um, yeah, so do four mowings a year, so they're trying to, so there was a, like a late winter wave that, that they missed, so then now they're trying to get them all caught up, uh, with the spring.
They moved in front of my house yesterday.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was over on South Laurel.
Yeah, that's, that's right. That's the one.
Okay.
Yeah, where the, where the guy asked, and, uh, that's essentially what happened. He, that guy actually, we looked at the schedule of South Laurel. Um, he, he must keep the mo- uh, the mowing schedule in a book, cause he pretty much had our entire.
Yeah, I got two.
Schedule from last year.
Just worried about, uh, Marlowe too, so y'all need to get over there.
So I think by the middle of next month, they'll be all caught up, uh, on everything, uh, with those two mowing cycles, and then they'll just continue with the regular ones.
Cool.
I don't really have anything, but I just wanna mention this to you. Um, Jamie and I talked about trying to get with DOT, and arranged a meeting to talk about the parkway, the forelanding, maybe some road swaps. Um, now's the time with this announcement Friday to get before EP, I mean, uh, DOT really quickly. And if you're still wanting to travel to do that, I think it'd be better to be face-to-face than by Zoom, cause I'd like to also sit down with E.P.D., um, with our wastewater that we're trying to get resolved. These permits, they, like, they keep, I'm not sure they know how, how dire we are and how we need to address this. Um, they, in our meeting today, they were saying, well, you know, they got fifteen or twenty people looking for permits, and they all think theirs is a high priority. That's baloney. Ours is the high priority, you know? And so if, if, if our consultants and engineers are saying that, what's E.P.D.'s saying? I, I think if we could schedule that meeting to do one and then go sit down with the others, to let them really understand what we are facing, get all the goodie we can out of a trip to Atlanta.
EOM report shows we're in dire need of going have a meeting with them.
Who?
So this EOM report shows we're in a dire need for that.
Yeah, yeah, and so I, we're fixing to give them some applications for some things, um, for the, uh, um, spray fields, land application, I mean, the, I mean, the, um, what do you call it, discharge?
Right.
Load, um, so we can make applications possibly for that, if we have public hearings, to make sure the public's fully aware what we're trying to do and accomplish. But as, as things come to them, I think that we need to have these discussions now, so as it comes to their table, they'll say, oh, this is the Effingham, that this is their issue. I think waiting to after they get all this information may delay us even longer.
Right.
And just to remind everybody, we have about nine months to resolve a lot of our issues, so if you could look at Jamie, and I'll tell it to the clerk on this one, if you could look at Jamie and I's calendars with us, call us or whatever, and work out, maybe the three of us can make a one-day trip.
Yeah, I, I can try and work something out with, um, Ann Purcell on the G-dot side, and then, um, and then, uh, w- we'll talk to whoever our consultants are talking to on the E.P.D. side, and, um, uh, do the same trip. I think it's the same building, so.
Yep, and, and John might even help you say, hey, my, my folks down there need, need to see you. He may can help set it up on the E.P.D. side.
And, and before I forget, um, budget meetings?
I think that's really gotta happen in the next two or three weeks, Jamie.
Sometime within the next three weeks, we're gonna have to sit down, okay. Okay, so we, we will be getting, um, sending out probably, uh, something this week to y'all to see when everybody's available, just to have, uh, you know, a, a individual or, or no more than three, uh, sit downs, uh, on the budget, so we can prevent it at the first meeting in June.
Okay, that'd be great. Alright, anything else? We have our executive session minutes before us. You've read them. Is there any corrections, additions to those minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve them as presented.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Kiefer? Alright, motion by Mr. Deloche, second, second by Mr. Kiefer to approve the executive session minutes of May third as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Hearing none, they are approved. Do we have a need to go in executive session? I got that out of order, but. Okay, very good. So I guess we, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Deloche, second by Mr. Looper to adjourn the meeting. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? No. Hearing none, we are adjourned.
Sarah.
Sarah.